Good evening. Today is September 21st, 2021. Welcome to a special meeting of the Cupertino City Council, immediately preceding our regularly scheduled meeting of September 21st. Madam City Clerk, could you please take the role?
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Way.
Here.
Councilmember Willie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow.
Yeah.
Mayor Paul.
And I'm here. All right, so today's special meeting has as its topic, a study session on the pre-approved accessory dwelling unit plans that we have recently implemented. And I believe that we have our Director of Planning, our Director Ben Fu here. And Madam, Mr. City Manager, would you like to introduce the item?
No, we can turn it straight over to Director of Community Development, Ben Fu. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, Ben Fu, Director of Community Development. With me tonight, I have John Martier, Senior Planner with our Community Development Department. And so, as the Mayor introduced this item, study session provide update on our pre-approved, pre-approved accessory dwelling unit program. Then we asked the Council receive this presentation and provide us with any comments that you may have. You can scroll down to the second slide, please, John. Thank you. As you can see, this, this item originally was a part of the Cities World Program from a couple of years ago. Initially started as just to, to establish some procedures on how we can fast-track and streamline ADU review. And that, as we completed that, that effort, it turned into a develop, further developed into, how do we sort of incentivize and provide, further incentivize and provide a pre-approved ADU program for our residents. So, it has also gone through Plant Commission as well. We'll receive their comments. Part of this presentation tonight, as John continues with the slideshow, we'll talk about what's happened, what's occurred, compare past, past to present, and also talk about what the comments we received from Planting Commission. So with that, I'll hand off this part to John. John?
Thank you, Ben. Good evening, Mayor and Council, and to the Cupertino public at large. I'm John Martier, the Senior Planner with the Community Development Department. So yeah, so just continuing what Ben was explaining, this is part of a work program, I am under housing, to establish procedures and policies on streamlining the ADU review process. Before we get into the actual process itself, the city has had a pretty good track record in comparison to other cities in terms of encouraging the development of accessory dwelling units, or I'll, or how I'll refer to them throughout this presentation, is ADUs. So prior, encourage incentives for ADUs are, has been as follows, at least within, since 2015. We've, we've exempted from our below-market rate manual, the ADUs from any BMR fees. In the 2018, 2019 fee schedule, we greatly reduced the plant check inspection fees for ADUs, especially when it comes in through the building permit processes. And we've always had a ministerial review of, of accessory dwelling units, unless there was some type of hillside exception that was part of it and whatnot. And since the state has gone through their push to encourage accessory dwelling units, I would say since 2016, the city has always been full compliance with the state's standards, which includes reduction in parking and any other minimum development standards, as well as fee exemptions in state law since that date. These include no-impact fees for units that are under 75 square feet, which include, you know, park dedication fees, which ran in the neighborhood of $15,000. And also, no off-site improvements are required for any ADU regardless of size or design. So, as Ben had said, we, this was just really a general item in our, in our work program to encourage ADUs. And so, myself and, and other staff members had gone to look at what other cities had done. And what we found was that the City of San Jose's ADU Ally Program was probably the most consistent with the direction that we felt. The Council at the time had wanted to, to go. And whereas, you know, some of the other cities would have taken a, a pretty sizable financial investment in purchasing plant sets and, and, and other types of development of, 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 of webpages and whatnot that weren't within the scope of what we, we felt that the city wanted to go into. So we, we brought this to the Plant Commission in June 23rd, 2020, and we discussed pretty in-depth the City of San Jose ADU Ally Program, which really offers pre-approved plans from selected vendors. And what they have found is that it really quickens the review process while saving the applicant money, the applicant's money. In the staff report, you can see that I attached a, or put a link to the San Jose Ally Pro, Pre-approved Ally, excuse me, yeah, ADU Ally Program for pre-approved plans within the, within the staff report. And we brought back what we currently had done, which I'll go into the next couple of slides, to Plant Commission's site session on August 24th, basically last month. And the Commission didn't have any major changes at that time. So, what is our pre-approved ADU program? Well, first, it enables residents to choose a pre-approved ADU design from a specific vendor. So on the webpage, which we'll go through in a little bit, the, we would let, similar to what San Jose does, the vendor that's, that's marketing their pre-approved plans, as, as well as a link to their, to the web, to the webpage and whatnot. So what qualifies as a pre-approved ADU? Okay, is it any ADUs, an attached ADUs, a conversion? What, where can I do it? Can I be a hillside home? Can I be a home next to a creek or in the valley? So, pre-approved ADUs aren't throughout the whole city. You have to live in a certain zoning destination, within a certain geologic housing zone. And it can't be any other type of ADU except for detached streamlined ADUs, which essentially means an ADU that is under, that is detached and is under 800 square feet. Pre-approved ADUs, again, must maybe detached, but they also can be either stick-built, which means traditional construction, or they can be prefabricated. They must be within the Valley floor geologic destination. So if you live in a fault, a fault rupture zone, a slope instability zone, hillside zone, or liquid faction inundation zone, you're not eligible to have a, or your property's not eligible to have a pre-approved ADU on that site. Residents or applicants still have to submit further plan sheets with the pre-approved ADU, which, which make, which have to consist of a boundary survey, site plan, inspects for HVAC units, or if proposed to be part of that as well. So here's the, the route that a resident or homeowner would have to take, or even a vendor would have to take to get the pre-approved ADU plans submitted. So a vendor would submit a design for the ADU to build the apartment. Those ADU plans are routed to various departments for review and approval for building code and fire safety. If those plans are approved, the vendor in designer lists on the city's webpage, and the approved design is, is kept in a file, typically a building permit file. Qualified homeowners work with the approved vendor to submit the site-specific building permit. And from there, the building permit application is reviewed for compliance with zoning-related issues. And then the building permit is issued. So what I'd like to do at this point, if, Mayor, if you're okay, I can walk through the webpage, if that's okay?
Perfectly good.
All right, great. So, fingers crossed, the link works. Let me just bring it up here. Can you all see the webpage? Fine?
Yes, we can.
Oh, perfect. Awesome. Okay, so essentially, here is the webpage. You can see that we have a nice little photo of the traditional nicely-designed detached ADU, which probably, most likely would be one that would qualify. So then we have these accordion files right here that tells the vendor how to submit. And within the description of what the submit, how to submit, are links to the building permit process, the fee schedule, and whatnot. Then we have the widget over here that, the accordion widget, excuse me, that describes the process to the homeowner. Once they find a vendor they like, what do they have to do? Or how do they choose a vendor? But most importantly, those are property qualified. So if you don't mind, I picked two addresses in the city at random to go through. If it's your house or someone at, at home, I apologize. So if you don't mind, I'll go through and type in a few addresses right here. So this first address is one that would probably most like, that would most likely qualify for an ADU. So we hit search right there. See information? So you can see the status comes out. It would say, "This property may qualify for pre-approved ADU." So whether they qualify, they may qualify or might not qualify, we always encourage the homeowner or resident or applicant to speak with city staff. And over here, it shows the zoning, the property, as well as the geologic hazard zones. You can see it's in the Valley floor, so yes, it would. And it's also in R1 Zone. We also have a map feature that would show where in the city your, your home is, and just to confirm that that's actually your, is your home. And I have one more address, one that we think probably will most likely not qualify. So we can see this one's in the hillside right here. So we just go to info. So the SaaS says, "This property likely does not qualify for a pre-approved ADU. Please contact Planting Department to confirm." So we can see the zoning is a hillside zone, and the geologic hazard zone is a slope instability. So, this last widget is a pre-approved vendors. As we don't have any vendors yet. We did have a question from the community as to, well, how come San Jose has all these vendors and we don't yet? The reason is because our webpage is really a soft opening at this point. We didn't want to do a hard, staff didn't want to do a hard push out to vendors, so such as designers or architects, with, really without the Council having a final say as to the process and design of this program. So that's really the reason why we, at, at this point, don't have any vendors. But we, we have had some preliminary interest amongst some certain vendors, and that we are currently helping, assisting them with in terms of the process. One of the things that we did as well was develop community handouts that are on our ADU webpage as well. One is talks, the first handout on your left over here is a, just an information sheet that kind of just goes through any frequently asked questions on the other side, as well as the development standards on the front side. Then we have steps to, to complete ADU. This is mostly steps just to the traditional building permit path. So, where are we at since the, the fifth cycle of the housing element started in 2014? So as you see throughout the years, we have had a growth in the amount of ADUs permitted. And even as of 2021, August of 2021, we've actually seen, we've already surpassed 2020 with 25 ADUs permitted. If you recall, with this fifth housing element cycle that stretched from 2014 and 2018, I'm sorry, to 2022, excuse me, the city only anticipated development of four ADUs per year, which means we only anticipate 36. As of now, we've already permitted, in this housing element cycle, 118. So, I decided to just do an analysis of 2020 to 2021 in terms of what's been permitted, just to show how successful or what the trends are within the city in terms of ADUs. I only chose this couple of years because that, since 2020 is really when the, the state had that big push to, to have more lenient standards for those development of these types of housing units. As you see, we haven't permitted any JDUs yet. We have permitted 15 detached ADUs with, with an average size of 652 square feet. 18 attached ADUs with a, with average sizes of 625 square feet. And conversion of principal dwelling units or conversions of detached structures of 503 square feet. Of those conversions, 10 have been garage spaces. So this, at this point, I'm just looking for questions or comments. But before then, just a couple of the, some helpful links for you. Our general ADU webpage is www.cupertino.org/ADU. For specifically the, the pre-approved ADU plants, it's cooperino.org/ADUplants. And that concludes my presentation.
Thanks, John. Let's, in the interest of time, let's go to our attendees to see if anyone has any comments before we open this up for questions and comments from Council. And I see that Jennifer Griffin has her hand raised. Everyone has three minutes to speak from the public. And if your hand is raised by the end of the comments of the first person, I will call on you. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor Darcy. I thank you, John, for stumbling, for bravely going into ADU land. Our planners, I give you guys a great pat on the back. This is difficult stuff to go through, and you guys always do it in a very graceful manner. Then again, because of what the governor did last Thursday, signing SB 9 and SB 10, everything has just gotten even more murky. I, I have questioned, I'm glad that the city is taking a responsible, measured approach to the ADUs, because I understand they are state law, but this is recent. There's a lot of questions about them. I have made a point of following all of the staff members' presentations on the ADUs through Planning Commission, City Council, workshops, et cetera. And I am very pleased that the city is taking a responsible approach and understanding that this is both a neighborhood issue, neighbor issue, and then choices of homeowners. I just had, I will say that I did see a two-story ADU in, next to Santa Cruz Yacht Harbor about a week ago, and it is in a tsunami zone. I think those are legal in Santa Cruz. But anyway, I like your webpage. I've been looking at it. I just had a couple of questions. In terms of where are we with the four-foot setback from? Is, does that mean from the front of the property, from both sides and the back? Do we, it might be good to develop a handout sheet for neighbors so that if they found out that someone next door to them was putting in an ADU, these are things that they might need to consider. I mean, my first thought would be, I would go out and hire a surveyor, because I would have, we have to make sure that the boundaries are set correctly. I also have two PG&E clearance lines across two parts of the property. I, I think that that's important to think about. Is this four-foot setback, is that something that will change eventually? I'm not a real big fan of it because you could burn down the entire neighborhood very, very quickly. I'm also got a question about the conversion of garage space into ADUs. Are we requiring them to leave a pad for people to be parking so they're not going to be out on the road? And then, can you allow, when they put the ADU in, to bring in a boom crane and go over people's properties and drop this unit in a backyard so that you'd have cranes dropping it? Some of the ADU websites talk about bringing in a boom, and they can drop the unit in. I would have some reservations about that.
Okay.
We understand with nine and 10, you can still have ADU. So how does that affect property? Thank you so much. Keep up the good work, John and everyone.
Welcome. Thanks so much. And let's go ahead and bring it back to Council. I'll go by hands. We're doing all right on time. And so, I'll allocate roughly five minutes per Council member at this point. Vice Mayor Chow. And then we'll follow Vice Mayor Chow by Councilmember Way and Councilmember Willie.
Okay, so, why is the prefab units not included in the pre-approved plan?
If I can answer that, Vice Mayor, thank you. We, we would, we would allow prefabricated units as part of the pre-approved.
Oh, because one of the slides says, "Stick-built and prefab units are not allowed."
It says, "Pre-approved ADUs must be detached, but can be stick-built or prefabricated."
Oh, I see. I read it obviously. Okay. So I see that the staff report include, thank you for creating these steps, easy to read. But then I don't know, if someone choose a pre-approved plan, which step they are skipping? How much shorter in terms of time for them? And how much lower cost for, compared with a regular, not pre-approved plan?
So I think more than a cost, I, I think it's a time measure, you know, in, you know, in discussions with our, our Building Department, as well as, you know, the City of San Jose's Building Department, too. Most comments on, on ADUs are really, just really any structural plans, but mostly just focused on ADUs come from the Building Department. And, you know, rarely does, does an application for a building permit get approved in the first round, at least for an ADU. If it's, if it's, you know, there's always two rounds, sometimes even three, maybe even four. It depends on the design you get. You know, they missed something on structural, they missed a code step here, you know, maybe didn't put a firewall where they're supposed to. So what this does is take away that step. You know, the first round is always three weeks, at least three weeks. And then the second round is 10 business days, and it's supposed to get shorter each time. So, that, since, so since you would skip-
So like, I put the steps in here. Step one, two, three, four. So you are, you, they say usually, step three and four, there might be a repeat of step four.
Right.
Each round will take 10, two, three weeks.
Right.
So with a pre-approved plan, likely, the plan can be approved in the first round on step four.
Correct, correct. Yeah.
Right, that we are saving a lot of repetition in this part.
Yeah.
But the, the rest will be the same.
Correct, correct. I would, yes, absolutely.
Okay. And then, a question is, I, um, thank you for finally getting this. I think I suggested this to Deb a year ago when I saw San Jose was doing this pre-approved ADU. So I suggested to Deb, we should also provide that. I'm glad that it's finally come over. But then you are saying, "We not set up a process, but we don't have any vendors yet." Do you know how many vendors San Jose have? And how different our process is? Is it likely substantially similar to San Jose? For example, 10 vendors are already approved in San Jose. Likely, those 10 vendors can follow similar application process and get the same plan approved for Cupertino. How, I, I'm curious how close we are lying in terms of the application process for the vendors?
So, pretty much very similar. You know, it's almost, I wouldn't say it's a carbon copy, but we, we try to make it, it's, we, we didn't try to reinvent the wheel in, in many aspects of what San Jose does. They, they seem very happy with it. And the vendors I've talked to who also have their, their pre-approved plans with the City of San Jose are very happy with their process as well. To answer your question, how many vendors do they have? I would say somewhere around 10. And some, and some of those vendors have about three or four designs as well. So for each vendor. So you're looking maybe at 15 and 20 designs that are available to the public to use.
You mean like different size, like, I guess, 300, 500, 800, maybe 1,000 or more different size?
Yeah, under 800. Yeah, absolutely. So, so, yeah, so.
Under 800 for the ministerial approval, you mean?
Yes, yes. Otherwise, if you go above 800, then you start to get into, you know, FAR limitations, lock coverage limitations.
Oh, okay. So likely, once we approve these, those vendors could easily apply for Cupertino. Great. Thank you. Good to know. That's all. Mayor? Mayor?
Yes, I was going on a dialogue about how you had spent your five minutes. And now, we have Councilmember Way, Councilmember Willie, and Councilmember Moore. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Yeah, so actually, Vice Mayor has asked a lot of my questions. My one question actually answered by Vice Mayor is, it looks like from the presentation, this was proposed in June 2020, and we're only looking at for the Planning Commissioner in September 2021. The delay is for, because we just don't have time to do it? Or, I will believe ADU right now because it does count toward our housing element. So it will be a very welcoming feature for our residents. And I look into San Jose's website, and they do have quite a few ADUs that's pre-approved available. So I'm very excited about this process. My one question that's left that Vice Mayor has been asking is, how long do you think this process would be? Like, we would have pre-approved ADUs vendors on our website?
Well, my expectation is within the next couple of weeks to really start pushing out notice that, that we have. I know, maybe a press release, at least within the next couple of days to the public, that we have this, that we have this program. And then, start, you know, I, great question because I was talking to our building, interim building official today about what, what ways we can do to, to reach out. You know, I already have a list of architects and designers and, and general contractors that have submitted in the past for ADUs that we can reach out to. And, you know, and looking at San Jose's website, we can also reach out to those directly because we know they have interest in that program and whatnot. So I, I think it could be fairly quickly. You know, when can we start listing them? You know, they still have to, those vendors, once they apply, still have to go through the vetting process and, and whatever else, too. And so that's, so I, I would think a couple of months before maybe we see, and, you know, I'm being, that's a pretty conservative number, just, just a temporary expectation before we see a vendor listed.
Okay, thank you. Just one more quick follow-up. I did put my address into it, and my house is qualified for an ADU. So one, one follow-up question is, what, what to alleviate residents' concerns? The setback line, the egress, address, they all have to be conforming to our city's code, right?
Correct, yeah. And, you know, I know one of the residents talked about, you know, boundary surveys. And we, we, you know, we do require boundary survey for, for any additional, any additional square feet, ADU or even additional room to a, to a single-family home. And for that reason, we want to make sure that, you know, that, that those buildings are in the right spot. You know, we don't, we want to make sure that I, any required easements for utilities or even drainage easements and whatnot, too. So, yes, and, you know, they're still city standards. And, you know, the city has always taken a very liberal approach to ADUs. You know, since ADUs could have always been as close as three feet to the property line, you know, depending on the wall height. So, if you can answer your question, Councilmember?
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Great. Thanks, Councilmember Way. And you've got about two minutes left. Next, we have Councilmember Willie, followed by Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Willie?
Yeah, thank you, John. And thank you for the picture so that people can kind of get an idea of what the structure might look like in their neighbor's backyard. I think it's great that we're helping to facilitate more housing units. I just want to be sure that the affected neighbors also realize how this will play out. And so that's where my questions are. So, we, we've had a number of ADU approval. How does the city know, or does the city know how many of those became rentals versus they became just additional space for the house? Is it like the B&Bs where they have to apply for some type of license or something so that the city collects it? or something so that the city collects its tax? That's the first question.
So it's a great question. I think that's, you know, that's one of the concerns most people have. Are these return to verboes or Airbnb's, short-term rentals and whatnot? So the state specifically, it's a statute that you can't use these for rentals less than 30 days. So, you know, any rental would have to be over 30 days. You know, I don't have statistics about how many are rented and whatnot. I could just tell you anecdotally what we hear. You know, oh, my mother's coming from overseas, and, you know, we just want to have her place for her to live. Or, you know, my children can't, just graduated college, and they have a job at Apple, but they can't afford, they can't afford an apartment. So I want to give them the opportunity to live at home, but have their independence. So those are the stories we hear. But, you know, any data on how many are rented rather than owner-occupied, staff doesn't have that.
Good, that's a start. Now, next one is, how does the ADU get affected by the lot FAR? You know, if it's, if it's a, in Rancho, the lots are like 5,000 square feet. The FAR is 45%. And that means the total structure 2,250. And that includes the 400-square-foot garage. So that means the existing house, you know, might be 1,850 with, and then has the garage. Is it allowed to now exceed the FAR for an ADU?
Quick answer is yes. So what the state has said a year and a half or so ago was that local jurisdictions cannot prevent the development of ADUs up to 800 square feet. If it's 801 square feet, then all bets are off. Then, yes, you are subject to FAR, lot coverage, any other standard we have. However, if it's under 800 square feet or under, we cannot, they, you know, they can have 50% FAR, as opposed to what's typically required to 45%.
Is that a limit, 50%?
No, I'm just throwing a number out.
Okay. So with that being said, you know, in the past, residents have worried about parking. Again, in Rancho, with lots of 5,000 square feet, the frontage is 50. If you take a 50-foot frontage, a 20-foot-wide garage, then you're, and then you've got 10 feet on one side for garbage cans and things of that nature. And that leaves essentially enough room to park one, maybe one and a half cars. Now, larger lots, typical city lots, 6,500 square feet, 7,000 square feet, where the frontage is 65 or 70 feet, you'd have room for clearly like two cars. One of those maybe being for the ADU, maybe both of them. Is there any consideration in the ADU requirements on lot frontage width that might help alleviate or address parking problem?
Unfortunately, no.
Okay. Kind of a unique case, but, you know, when a resident asks, I think we should at least check. If it was a prefab and they were using a crane to move it in, are they allowed to go over a neighbor's house? Or must it be over their, their house? Would it ever fall in crash? Probably the odds are way against it. But that doesn't really make people sleep good at night. What, if anything, do we know about that?
You know, that's a great question. Public Works issues those permits for utilizing the right-of-way. I don't know if someone's available for Public Works to answer that question. I, I, I think I know the answer, but I want to assume and give you the wrong answer.
That's fine. So let me go real quick on the last one. So if somebody builds a house, the city requirement, unless it's been changed, they must have a 400-square-foot garage. And then on your, you know, if that's still in effect, that's probably one question. Providing it's still in effect, you mentioned that some of the ADUs, 10 of them, were garage conversions. When someone does a garage conversion, what happens to the two-car garage requirement?
We cannot require them to replace those garage spaces.
Okay, so they had to have it when they built the house, but once they convert the garage, there's no subsequent requirement for garage. Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks, Councilmember Willie. I did give you about a minute of my time. And so we'll go on to Councilmember Moore.
Great, I really appreciate these questions. So I noticed on one of the handouts, it mentions single-family. And in my opinion, we no longer actually technically have single-family zoning in state. And I'm kind of wondering, I, one thing I don't know about SB 9 is, does it sunset? And if not, should we be changing our single-family titles to be saying like 1 to 4, if it's 1 to 4 units? If that's what single-family means at this point? I'm just kind of curious about that. I asked a question of the attorney about SB 9 and the use of ADUs. If we could have that clarified for the public at large, I think that would be helpful. Looking at the table 19112030A from the municipal code for new construction for detached ADU of 800 square feet, I just want to clarify this. I'm seeing that the setbacks are four feet from the rear and side lot lines. And the height is 16 feet. I want that clarified. Is that 16 feet maximum? I'm assuming it is, but it's not clear here. So maybe this could be actually cleaned up in the municipal code to say max, if that's what the intention was. So with that, with regards to the 16 feet, that wouldn't matter if the next-door neighbor had a retaining wall and was down three, four feet. And the neighbor to the rear could actually put something 16 feet high, four feet away from the property line, and actually cast a good bit of shadow to the backyard, especially for some of these smaller lots, if I'm understanding that correctly. And lastly, with regards to the four feet, are eaves included within that? Are they allowed to extend into the four feet? Or must the eaves be stopped at the four-foot line? Because the, these older Eichlers that we have, our eaves are within the five-foot side yard. All right, I'll start with that. Thank you.
So I'll, Chris, go ahead.
I was going to suggest that, John, you, John, you start with some of the planning questions that Councilmember Moore asked, and I can jump in and address the question regarding SB 9, since it's germane to the construction of ADUs.
Perfect. So thank you, Councilmember Moore. I'll start backwards. So, yes, the 16 feet is the height maximum. And, you know, if it does help, I will take that recommendation into consideration to add the word "maximum" on top of that. And as long as they are four feet from the property, the side or rear property, then they can have the 16-foot wall right there. Unless they want to go as close as three, then, you know, our standards in 19100, which are our accessory building standards, then we can dictate the height, the wall height, if they get, if they want to go closer than four feet. In terms of the eve area, I understand, I know exactly what you're talking about in terms of the Eichler and mid-century modern design homes. They do have quite a bit of eaves, and they do encroach into the setback. And our zoning does allow two-foot encroachment into the side or rear yard setbacks, or into any setback, rather, of architectural features, which we would consider an eve. So that would be allowed. And I think that was it in terms of the specific planning. And, Chris, I think you're on for the SB 9 list. Councilmember Moore, you have any further questions or clarification on those points?
So, well, it's my understanding, and thank you, John, that it's my understanding, then, you can have a two-foot encroachment on the 16 foot. So my concern with that is if you have a shed design and it's sloping up, it's actually now, could it end up being over 16, the top of the eaves at that point? So that's now a three, a two-foot setback. And it's going to be, depending on how steep the shed roof is. So how does the rule work there?
That's a, that's a good point, very existential, that we have to consider. I would say that, you know, architectural features can, can go above the height. You know, in this case, I would say, you know, one to two foot would be reasonable. But that is something I, we could clarify if you think on a, on a handout for ADUs, particularly if it's, you know, that close to the property line.
Yeah. And I do appreciate something that Councilmember Willie was asking about the uses of these ADUs, because when I was digging into the San Jose prefab ones, one of the websites advertised in-law unit, home office, man cave, pool house, shop, she shed, and rental unit, the majority of these not being for the purpose of providing extra housing, but letting the family essentially sprawl out on their lot, and, and you can have a streamlined approval of it. So I would personally like to see if there's a way we can anonymously get people to state what the use is afterwards, so we can get some data to see if this is actually solving the housing issue. Or are we just, you know, happy to be able to check off some boxes, say, moderate units were being built? But, but the reality is, you know, 20% of those are pool houses, 15% are home offices, workshops, vacation places for their relatives to come hang out and whatnot. I'd like to know after a couple of years what the reality is, so we know if this is working or not. And I don't want people to feel like they're being penalized if that's, if that was the ultimate purpose, but it would be good to have the data.
Understood. That's something we can take into consideration. I don't know what our limits are in terms of asking, but, but, you know, we could, we could, we can take into consideration.
Okay, great. And then the last question was for city attorney.
Yeah, and I can briefly address this. So, so, you know, just to lay out the basics, you know, SB 9 allows a ministerial approval of a duplex on any property that's owned, single-family residential, subject to a number of qualifying criteria. It also allows any single-family residential lot to be split into two lots, again, subject to largely overlapping qualifying criteria. So you, but if you exercise both of those options for ministerial approval, you can develop up to four units on what was, you know, originally one single-family residential lot. If, as a multifamily property, you would ordinarily have the option to add one ADU to both of those lots. However, SB 9 includes a provision that, that states that local jurisdictions are not required to both allow the development of four units in this matter, using, you know, both of the ministerial approval authorities under SB 9, and also allow required ministerial approval of the ADU. So you can, you can limit the construction of ADUs if someone chooses to construct four units on a formerly single fam, one formal single-family lot.
Thank you, Chris. Who is the city in this, in this situation? So you, they would receive a ministerial approval to do the lot split and have the, the 80, the two duplexes. Who would have that denial authority in the city in this case, if they were asking for an ADU?
So my additional analysis is that we would, we would need a zoning ordinance amendment to, to, to provide that denial authority to, to planning staff.
So right now, it, okay, so you, you could, I'm going to assume, give that denial authority to city council alternatively? Or would it always be city staff? Is there a choice?
Well, so the application, this pertains to a ministerial permit application, so both the approval and denial authority would rest in city staff.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. So I want to make sure that our member of the public had answers to the questions that she posed. And so the four-foot setback with regard to the front, does that apply to both sides as well as the back? I think that was the first question that was asked.
Does not apply to front. The city recognizes the example of the R1 neighborhoods, the 20-foot front setback.
Okay.
Just the sides and rear.
Okay, got it. So it does apply to the sides and the back, but not the front? And the front is a 20-foot setback, you said, John?
Yes.
Okay. And then there was a question about developing a handout sheet. Is there any kind of useful reference source that we have available on the website? Or are planning to push out there?
Yes, we do have a couple of handout sheets. We have one that's FAQ, and also one that lists the development standards. Councilmember Moore already gave us a recommendation to add the architectural feature portion, question to that. And we do have another handout that talks about the process.
I see, I see, okay. And those are available online at the website that you're indicating in your presentation?
Right, Cupertino.org backslash ADU.
Great. All right. And then the final question that Jennifer was asking has to do with, I think it had to do with construction, you know, something along lines of like completely finished unit, if I understood it. She had mentioned a crane or something like that. Did you catch that, or was that?
I think Councilmember Willie brought that, brought that back up. And, you know, I, in, what, my, my response was, I think I know the answer, but I'll, you know, since it is a Public Works item, it's their permit to issue. I think it would be best for some of Public Works to respond to that if someone's available. You know, my thought is, probably not over someone else's property. But, you know, I think to be 100%, you know, certain, I think some of Public Works should answer that question.
Got it, got it. Okay. So following up on a question that was asked by another one of the council members, so can we elaborate a bit more on denial authority? Because my understanding, understanding of the, kind of the inherent, you know, nature of an approval process is that, on the flip side of approval is, you know, not approving. So what exactly would need to be changed about our ordinance or zoning in order to impart that, you know, flip side of the approval ability?
So the zoning ordinance would need to incorporate the language in SB 9 that authorizes a city to, to, to deny an ADU application that would otherwise be ministerially, ministerially approved under state ADU law, in a situation where you wind up with effectively four units on a single-family lot due to a lot split, and then subsequent approval of duplexes on both lots. So there's, there's specific language in SB 9 that reserves that, that, that power to cities, you know, that they, that they otherwise would not be able to exercise under the state ADU law.
And is it correct that that language needs to be put in effect by the end of the calendar year? Or?
That's when, that is when SB 9 takes effect. So.
Okay, got it. Yeah, I mean, so we've, we've done a much better job keeping up to date on state legislation in the last, you know, several years. And I think that weeks do matter at this point. So, you know, if there are allowances, I don't want to wait three weeks and, you know, be falsely accused of trying to push these things through at the last minute. It is the end of September right now. So we would accurately, if we were to wait a month, have charges leveled at us, saying that, well, it's near the holiday season if you include Halloween. So I, I think that it would be a good idea to, you know, be prompt about how we're examining the allowances to cities on the recent suite of laws. Okay, so I see Councilmember Moore's hand is up. Let me check the time here. So we have about 20 minutes. I can go ahead and allocate another, another few minutes to each of us if we decide to use that for follow-up comments. Councilmember Willie, followed by Councilmember Moore. Seems to have been musical hands at this point, so.
Yeah, it'll be.
Yeah, it'll be fairly quick. Again, I I want to be sure the adjacent neighbors, you know, have have an ability to know what's going on. So what I want to ask is that, you know, previously, and unless the city has changed its rule, if a house added a second story, there needed to be a review with the planning commission and the neighbors notified so that they could at least have some input. I don't know if that's still the city's requirement, because things, I think, have been changed, but can we put something in there where at least the adjacent neighbors must be notified? If I take an extreme case, a person has a rental and never even comes to the rental property, kicks out the tenants, puts in his submittal for adding an ADU, or maybe even leaves the tenants in it, and puts the ADU there without ever talking to the neighbors, and and the tenants might not even know what's going on. Can we put something in there at least that they have to be notified? Although, would they be able to affect any change? You know, most likely not, but at least they would know what's going on in their adjacent lot. That's my question.
You know, typically ministerial approval approvals like this don't don't have noticing requirements. You are correct. It's it's still the case with two-story homes, because those are more discretionary or quasi- I'm using the wrong term, Chris. Quasi judicial review, you know, where the staff does have discretion on design and whatnot. So, you know, two-story homes, second-story additions, yes, those are still noticed. But, you know, new one-story homes, one-story additions that conform, including ADUs, that conform to the to the to the to the ordinance and into the building code, quite frankly, are just ministerial and don't have a noticing requirement currently.
And the can the city notify the adjacent owners just by being a good partner?
The the city could the city could send notices to adjacent owners at the city's expense. Unlike a discretionary permit process, we can't require the applicant to notice and pay for the noticing costs.
Great, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Councilmember Willie. Next, we have Councilmember Moore.
Hey, thank you, Mayor Paul. I was noticing on the San Jose site that they exclude the wildland urban interface, and for some reason, we don't have that listing for for our categories. We had fault rupture, slope instability, hillside, liquefaction, and inundation. Is it possible that we can add the wildland urban interface, or or is there a good reason for why we don't have that? That's one question. The second one is looking at some of these dry cleaner sites, which have contaminated onto residential areas. And apparently about 70, 75% of dry cleaners have had some some contamination of the the soil. What do you what do you do, or is there anything you can do if it's known that or anticipated that there is some contamination from an adjacent dry cleaner site onto a residence? And is there is there anything that that can be done about that in order to not agree to a ministerial approval? And and I'm I'm looking at an example, you know, in my hands of of residences which have been contaminated by a dry cleaner. And I would not want that city to ministerially approve the lot split and the densification of that lot without having it cleaned up for to for residential standards because of the potential for soil vapor intrusion into the new structure. Is there is there anything that can be done about that? So two questions, the wooie question, and then the hazmat. Thank you.
Sure, I'll I'll take the first question first. Yeah, we we could look into adding the wildlife interface areas as one of the ones that aren't consistent with the state of San Jose, that aren't qual- that that don't qualify for for pre-approved ADU structures. You know, for us, most of most of those zones are in the hillside anyways. So they're already excluded in a way, but we could add that. I think that's a fair that's a fair request. The second part, I'm thinking to add.
I could address this, John.
Sure, sure.
And we. So so so, I mean, to the extent that it's a question about lot splits per se, I am just going to respectfully defer that to a future discussion, because it's it's not agendaized. I'm sure we will be talking about it in the future. To the extent the question is about ADU construction, the state ADU law doesn't require environmental review. And I think the thinking is that there's either an existing residential property with with people living in it already, or it there could be environmental review with it, like, you know, for example, within the construction, within the context of an ADU built at the same time as the construction of of a primary dwelling unit under a non-ministerial process. But there there aren't, the state ADU law doesn't have the same kind of environmental breaks that are built into SB 35 and SB nine to the, you know, you know, which, you know, are there, be they, you know, if perhaps not adequate for some purposes.
Right, thank you.
Great, thanks, Councilmember Moore. And now we have Vice Mayor Chow.
Hi. I have other questions, but I'd like to first follow up on Councilmember Willie's question about the notification. My understanding is, as long as this objective standard, we should be allowed to require notification such as we have done for the small cell, which is ministerial approval also, right? My thinking is, there are a lot of state laws that's turning the previously discretionary approval into ministerial approval with much tighter or tighter requirement. And likely, for example, the city may be used to require six feet, and now the state law allows four feet. Maybe we can say, if you want to use four feet, you are required to notify your neighbors. This gives the neighbors a chance to have a conversation. Of course, the homeowner is has every right to still build to the four feet guideline. But maybe with a conversation, the neighbors could come up with a better compromise. That provides them that chance. So why couldn't the city still require notification when a neighbor wants to use the state standards rather than the normal city standards?
So so I I think each statute needs to be looked at independently. You know, here, we're we're looking at the state ADU law. And, you know, at least with ADUs that meet the minimum criteria, you know, meaning 800 square feet, four-foot rear inside setbacks, 16 feet height, the state law is extremely prescriptive as to what additional requirements the city can impose on the ADU development. And so, you know, my my review of these questions sometime back, you know, and the law hasn't changed, I I think it was pretty clear that we could not impose notice requirements on on the applicant. The city would still, if the city believes, you know, as as a policy position, that it's important that neighbors are notified of this this of these projects, then we could certainly provide notice to them, you know, by the city, at the city's expense, you know, paid for, you know, out of out of city revenues. But that 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 is, I think, that would be the approach. And and I do know that some cities have elected to do that, because they do think that neighbors having notice is important, even though, as you point out, they they might not have much say in in the process, because it is ministerial and, you know, the 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 building official is really compelled to to issue the building permit if they meet the standards in state law.
Okay, so some cities do provide notification on their own. Okay, maybe that's something we should consider. And then also notification for potential addition on-street parking when it's added, because other neighbors would want to know their on-street parking spaces would be affected. Yeah. And then my other question is, I'm I'm I assume that the vendors, when they submit their plans, we are not charging them any approval fee, right?
We will be charging a billing fee.
We will. We will still charge them?
Yeah, it's it's likely reduced. It would be similar to the building perm ADU permit fee that we charge a homeowner. But yeah, the vendor will be be charged. But it's it's, yeah.
Okay. I hope it's not too high, because I do want to encourage them to submit their plans. And then, so after we have maybe five or more vendors, do we have any outreach plan to inform the residents this is available?
I know within, at least, I'm assuming within the next few days, we should have a press release, I believe, when the the residents know or ever sign up to receive press releases that we that we have this program, as well as, you know, we're probably most likely do an active push in the next two or three weeks to vendors.
Okay. And then coming back to the concern, another council member raised that some of these ADUs are not used as potential additional housing units, as we hoped. But then I do want to know, so are these ministerial approved units, are they required to have kitchen and restaurants so that they are at least ready in case someone wants rented?
Yeah, I mean, if there's so there's three things that each ADU must have: facilities for sleeping, facilities for eating or cooking, and facilities for bathrooms, essentially. So you have to have all three of those.
To qualify for ministerial approval, so it cannot be just office space?
Absolutely. So if someone came in with just a bedroom and a toilet, that's, actually with a bathroom, I mean, that's just a backdoor office or backyard office that's subject to all the development standards, FER, block coverage, and whatnot. It does not count as an ADU.
Okay, great. Another question is regarding parking requirement. Oh, this is probably for SB nine discussion. Oh, that's good. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I'm done. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. So I hope that staff is is listening to the direction of the questions and comments and has good guidance for a follow-up on this. Appreciate the effort put forth here. I think that, as can be seen by production, you know, there are are two sides of every story at least. And we've actually been, you know, accused recently of having a very low production of this type of unit. But it seems like this is actually accelerating based upon what our initial projections were. So it will be quite interesting to see how the rest of the year plays itself out, as well as the following calendar year. So thanks very much. And we'll go ahead and adjourn the special meeting. It's now 6:33. We'll reconvene at 6:45 to begin our regularly scheduled council meeting for the third Tuesday in September. We'll see you in a bit. First 2021 regularly scheduled meeting of the Cupertino City Council. Madam City Clerk, could you please take the role?
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Here.
Mayor Paul?
I'm here. Okay, so the first item on our agenda today is a ceremonial matter and presentation. Normally, we have two. I've been trying to limit these to two this year so that we could get done by midnight. And so the first item, however, is of particular importance. We want to make sure that we we have good public safety and outreach. And so we have a proclamation recognizing September as National Suicide Prevention Month. And we would like to present the proclamation as a recommended action, recognizing September as National Suicide Prevention Month. We do have a representative from the county here, I believe, today. Miego Lean is this person available at this time?
Yes, I'm here, Mayor. Hi.
Excellent. Welcome. And if you'd like to give a few words with regard to the proclamation, which I believe our city clerk is going to be putting on the screen, welcome.
Great. I I'm not able to see the proclamation on the screen.
Nor I. So let me see if perhaps I can try to share it on my screen. Let's see. Oh, there you go, Kirsten. All right. Okay, well, welcome. And I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your name. Migo?
It's Migo.
Migo, okay, welcome.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for issuing this important proclamation today. My name is Migo Lean. I am the Prevention Services Division Manager with the county's Behavioral Health Services Department. And I'm accepting this proclamation tonight on behalf of the county's suicide prevention program, our Suicide Prevention Oversight Committee, and especially on behalf of the county residents who we serve, who have been affected by suicide, either personally or through the loss of people that they know due to suicide. There has been a county strategic plan and suicide prevention program since 2010. And in our work, we say the words suicide is preventable so often that it can start to sound a bit trite. But time and again, I hear about the impact of our prevention activities. There was a military veteran, now a police officer, who told me how he used the skills that he learned in suicide prevention training to support and help his peers. And I also remember the high school student and boy scout who cried and told his city council that he had had thoughts of suicide. And he said he finally felt recognized when his city passed a suicide prevention policy. So proclamations like this really help to make suicide prevention the priority that it should be. In spite of our efforts that have been, you know, collective and sustained over years, suicides in the county have increased in the past three years. And the COVID-19 pandemic has really brought into sharp focus how much our mental health and well-being are impacted by things like social connection, our physical health, and economic stability. And sadly, last year, 164 county residents died by suicide. We also know that mental health challenges and suicide don't discriminate, and so our efforts need to be deeply rooted in cultural understanding. While suicides largely affect white adult men, youth as young as 10, up to adults older than 85, have all been affected in our county. In recent years, suicides among women have also increased, and suicides among Asians in the county have nearly doubled. And just on a personal note, I'm also moved by Cupertino City's actions as a Taiwanese-American and someone who has personally seen suicide loss affect my family and friends. So it's clear that suicides can be prevented, and it really needs to be a community-wide effort. The council's proclamation today is significant in this effort, because it will help to raise awareness and fight the stigma around mental health and suicide. So again, on behalf of the county's suicide prevention advocates and the individuals and families we serve, I want to thank you and the city staff for your initiative today.
Thank you, Migo. And I do see that a few members of the public have their hands raised. I will go ahead and call on the public. And if you could be concise in your comments, that's not typically something that we do, is take comments on ceremonial matters. That would be much appreciated. Our speakers are Mary, Paul Soto, and user with a handle calling user one. Welcome, Mary.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Okay, so I'm not actually commenting on the proclamation that was just on. I have a separate issue. Is that all right?
Oh, that's fine. We'll go ahead and come back to you if you could just hold on. And we'll, is it related to the agenda, or is it not related to the agenda?
Not related to the agenda.
So that'll be in oral communications. We'll we'll get back.
Sorry about that.
Oh, no worries. Thanks. So now we'll go to Paul Soto. Welcome, Paul.
Good evening, Council and Mayor.
Uh, good evening, Council and, uh, Mayor Paul. Um, I was gonna wait. This is an agendized item, correct? Uh, the suicide? Okay, I can speak at, uh, about it at that time rather than this. I just wanted to thank you for extending me the, uh, the courtesy. I mean, th- this is just, and I'm really not used to this much courtesy with respect to city government, so I really appreciate that. I'll speak on it at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Paul. It's always nice to hear kind words. Uh, our next speaker is calling user three. Welcome. And I believe you'll need to push star six on your phone.
Hello, Mayor, and, uh, um, dear Mayor and council members and, uh, all the guests. This, um, I just want to have a little update and appreciate everyone, uh, trying to work this thing out. Recently, uh, we, um, are not.
Uh, this is not oral communications. This is regarding the suicide prevention proclamation. Uh, are you, is related to that?
Okay, I'm, uh, it's not the oral communication yet?
Not yet.
Oh, okay, okay. I wait, I wait. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, well, we'll bring it back and, uh, well, again, thank you very much from our representative, uh, from county. We'll see you again, um, presumably over on item number, uh, sixteen, I believe it is later in the agenda. Um, so, uh, let's go on to item number two. That's another ceremonial matter. That is a proclamation recognizing September twenty-first as World Alzheimer's Day. And the recommended action is similarly to present the proclamation recognizing September twenty-first as World Alzheimer's Day. I, I want to thank Diana Miller from the county as well, uh, who has been, uh, very patient with me, uh, personally. Uh, she had initially asked me to sign on to something that, uh, literally only takes five to 10 minutes. And, you know, I, I'm very chagrined to report that I have not done that yet, but I will commit to doing that. And I will commit to asking our council to do the very same so that we can have, uh, full spectrum support of, uh, recognition of, um, you know, mental, mental health issues and, uh, mental support. So this is a proclamation for World Alzheimer's Day. And, uh, Diana, would you like to, um, say a few words with regard to the proclamation?
Mayor, I don't see Diana having logged on yet as the panelist.
Oh, you don't? I actually did see her before, um, perhaps, perhaps she fell off.
She was logged on earlier, Mayor, and I believe, yes, various people are having technical issues. Um, and so she may have fallen off.
Okay, got it, got it. Uh, okay, well, um, you know, a- again, thanks to the county and kudos. Um, this is all part of our, uh, age-friendly efforts. And, uh, we're trying our best to make sure that we're recognizing, um, across the board, the, the health and safety issues, uh, but particularly recognizing an affliction that just, um, i- i- it's very, um, i- it's very taxing on, on people and their family and friends. And so, um, you know, thank you for, uh, putting this forward and, and for the recognition. Hopefully, um, our, our research and, and science will catch up with our aspirations to make sure that we um, don't suffer from these types of afflictions in the future. And, um, you know, let's, uh, let's, let's keep this on the forefront of our awareness. Item number three are, are certificates of recognition to the Cupertino Safe Routes to School, uh, Student Video Contest winners. Uh, we have a staff member, Cherie Walcoviaak, who coordinates the, uh, contest for, uh, for, for Cupertino as well as coordinates the Safe Routes to School program. And I know you're very busy, uh, coordinating our, our Bike Fest, uh, that will take place this weekend. So welcome, Cherie. I understand that you have, um, some, uh, summary of the contest as well as a couple of videos to share with us here.
Yes, thank you so much. So this past spring, Cupertino Safe Routes to School hosted a student video contest for both middle and high school students that centered around alternative transportation, which includes active modes such as walking, biking, and scootering, in addition to taking carpool or public transit. The idea being that for every student who gets to school using an alternative mode, that means one less car on the road, which has multiple benefits. So students, um, had the opportunity to enter their videos into one of two categories. The inspirational category where students could inspire their fellow students to walk, bike, bus, or take, um, carpool to school. Or educational, where students could teach their peers how to be safe while walking and biking. So all of the submissions that we received fell into the inspirational category. And within that category, there were two winners, one at the middle school level and one, and, uh, two winning videos, I should say, one at the middle school level and one at the high school level. So the, uh, winning middle school video was entitled Safe Routes to School Animation, and it was created by a Kennedy Middle School student who was a middle school student at the time. I believe they've moved on now. Um, her name is Sudisha Kumar, and I will play her winning video for you now. Hello, Sudisha.
Hello. There's a feeling of freedom and independence, a sense of adventure that doesn't fade. Usually by walking or biking, you get to appreciate and notice things you usually don't notice while driving. Although driving to school is convenient and quick, it's not always the best method of transportation. There are other alternatives that provide safer and healthier options for going to school. Methods like walking or biking enables children to incorporate regular physical activity and build strong muscles and joints. There are also cognitive benefits to walking or biking to school. Students who walk or bike in the morning are more attentive and ready to learn when they arrive at school. It also improves memory skills and brain health. When people decide to lace up their shoes or strap on their bike helmets, they are reducing the amount of air pollutants emitted by automobiles. And with more kids walking and biking, there will be less traffic congestion. It improves conditions for pedestrians and bikers and provides a stronger sense of community. When you spend less time in the car, you also spend less money on gas. At the same time, however, it's important to make smart decisions while walking or biking to school. For example, if it's raining, do you think it would be a good idea to walk? Not really. It's also important to understand the rules of the road and how to lock up your bike or wear a helmet to stay safe.
Didn't need to stop it. I just meant to minimize it. Um, here we go. Well done, Sudisha. And you'll be, and, um, you can pick up your certificate this Saturday at the Bike Fest.
Thank you so much.
And our high school winning video, uh, winning video was created by a team of high school students who, uh, two of whom go to Mona Vista High School. That would be Lindsay Ting and Crystal Cheng. And a third member named Avishi Trivedi from Silver Creek High School. Congratulations to all of you. Um, I will play the high school of the year. Not sure how to make this bigger, so I hope you can see it.
As students, when we get up in the morning, typically we aren't thinking about the impacts of how we get to school. As students, what we are thinking is, I need to get to school right now as soon as possible in order to not be late. But our actions can have some consequences. The car that you're driven in every day to go to school can contribute to global warming. In addition, moving in a fast-paced vehicle, among other fast-paced vehicles, may occasionally lead to accidents. So the next time you're able to think about how you get to school, consider something that is better for the environment and safer to not only you, but to those around you as well.
I walk to school, and I've been doing this for about four to five years. What I like about it is that I get more control than when I'm driving to school, and I get some exercise in my.
I bike to school. Some things I love about biking to school is being able to feel the nice cold breeze against my face when I bike down the street and also not having to be in so much traffic like you, like you would in a car. And if you think walking is a little bit too long or time-consuming, biking is just the right move.
Walking or biking to school are two easy alternatives to driving a car to school every day.
If you don't already, maybe you should do this when you go to school tomorrow.
It's the choices we make as citizens that work towards making our city, our country, and our world a better place.
Wonderful. Thanks so much. And, um, did we, um, did we want to show the certificates? Um, do we have those ready to, to, to scroll through at this point? Well, I, I take it that we, we would, uh, but for some technical difficulties, but, uh, you know, once again, um, we'll recognize Sudisha Kumar from the middle school inspirational category as well as Crystal Chung and Lindsay Tong and Avishi Trivedi, uh, from the high school inspirational category. And our, uh, commendations and kudos to Cherie as well from Cupertino staff. So thanks very much. Uh, keep up the great work and, uh, it's, it's great for health. It's great for the environment. And so, uh, wonderful to see students, uh, working on these types of, uh, issues and encouraging uh, these modes of transportation, uh, early on in, in your careers. So our next item is postponements and orders of the day. Would anyone from council, uh, like to speak to that item with regard to, uh, essentially reordering items on the agenda? Is, is there any, uh, request for that today? I don't see any hands raised, and so we'll go on to the next item. Uh, now we are at oral communications. Oral communications is, uh, to speak on any item that is not on our agenda tonight. And so, uh, once you are, uh, done, uh, speaking for, uh, once the first speaker is done speaking, I should say, you'll need to have your hand up by that time in order to be called on. You'll have three minutes. And our speakers, uh, at the moment are Jennifer Griffin, Lisa Warren, Paul Soto, calling user three, Mary Tushar Shindha. Uh, and that's who we have, uh, thus far. Welcome, Jennifer.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Darcy. Um, hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin, and if people weren't aware, uh, this came up during the, uh, study session on the ADUs. Uh, our governor signed S B nine and S B ten on Thursday afternoon or evening of last week, putting the entire state into a state of chaos and confusion, disbelief. Um, I, I was very surprised that our governor, with all of his experience, would have signed two bills like this that are so poorly written that there has been tremendous amounts of debate what these two bills mean. I believe that both of them are unconstitutional, particularly S B ten, which is taking, it, which is essentially messing with uh, California's voters' rights to have local initiatives. Um, I, I think the governor has little practical land use experience, and he was advised very poorly about the ramifications of S B nine and S B ten. You cannot do a ministerial lot split. It is illegal. You have to have, um, people come out, surveyors, the lot, the lot lines have to be surveyed and they have to be recorded indeed with the county. Um, I, I am, I'm frankly appalled at some of the level of confusion that these bills have rolled out on the state and the cities, and they become active on January first. I would beg, I would think right now seventy-five percent of the people in California are not aware. We are trying to get the word out. This has happened in Oregon. A lot of people in Oregon are not aware that a law was put in a year ago that allows the same thing. This is not the way to conduct yourself as a governor in this state. Um, I think that it's going to take a lot of time and money on the city's parts, a lot of confusion. We, look at the questions that were asked in, about the ADUs. This affects the ADUs. This affects Reno. It's everything. Um, it's loss of local control. I, I doubt at this point that Gavin will be fit to go on to become president. He is, does not have my vote for that. Um, I, I'm very, very concerned about where we're going with this. And I do advise people to become as aware of S B nine and ten. There is an initiative that will be on the ballot next year to, to come back to local control again. I hope that you all can take a look at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jennifer. And, uh, I have the same hands raised, and so we'll go to Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. So just to piggyback on Jennifer, uh, the initiative, which is in the works, has been submitted to the state, is statewide. There's no guarantee it will be on the ballot next November. We need people to sign it in order to make that happen, so please keep that in mind and, and start asking questions. Um, so there was a very recent city council meeting that spoke about ADUs. I was unable to attend the entire thing, but what I did take from it, I, I have a couple follow-up questions. There were some excellent questions asked by council members, but I have some more. Um, to just be considered in the future. I know nothing can be done to, tonight. We have a, every city should, and I know that we do, have privacy planting regulations, ordinances, and covenants that actually follow properties. So I have a question about what happens if a two-story, an existing two-story house who has privacy plantings that go with the property regardless of who owns it, um, choose to build an ADU. With the state's requirements and allowances, are you able as a city to consider the fact that a four-foot setback with a two-foot eve gives you two feet to grow privacy plantings? And in many cases, the plantings are trees that already have fifteen, twenty-foot canopies, forty in some cases, so twenty on your side. I want to be sure that a person could be told, no, you cannot build this that close to the property lines because in order to do so, you will have to remove or damage your privacy screening that's currently in place and recorded with the county. I don't know if you have the ability to do that, but I think it's important to think about it and ask those questions. And same being said for new construction, total new construction on a lot, if there is a two-story home being constructed along at the same time as an ADU, that you cannot ignore the fact that privacy screening is still required and has to be able to grow properly. And perhaps the roof from the ADU would cover the privacy issues in some spaces, but not in all. So it just can't be ignored. All this happens together. Um, and let's see, just a note, John, there are, and council, there are twenty-foot setbacks in most of the city, front setbacks, but not all homes, properties have that. Five for one have twenty-five foot.
Thank you, Lisa. Our next speaker is Paul Soto. Welcome, Paul.
Uh, thank you, Member, uh, thank you, Mayor, and, um, members of the council. My name is Paul Soto. Um, I am a, I'm the son of a campasino. Uh, my father and mother, uh, got here in nineteen thirty-eight, and they, uh, they lived in a neighborhood called South Sequebdes. And that was on the east side of San Jose. In fact, John Steinbach had visited the area in nineteen thirty-eight, and he wrote a, he wrote an essay, and it's called Starvation Under the Orange Tree. And I would center my, 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 uh, comment on that document, that essay. Because I think it would be helpful to have at least some type of city meeting with regard to the redlining policies in the redlining map of nineteen thirty-nine. You see, because this is the critical starting point that I think, w- we're gonna have to get used to that language. We're gonna have to get used to, to really what redlining is, number one. What did it do? How is it implemented? Who benefited from it? And is there a residual impact today? And I would venture to argue and state that the, uh, And I would venture to argue and state that the, uh, policy that we just saw passed that, uh, you know, there's some obvious concern on this call with regard to those policies, that they have their roots in that nineteen thirty-nine map. I grew up in a redlined area. And so I, I, I know very clearly what happens and how the wealth concentration happens at the expense, at the very same time, at the expense of another group of people. And so what I'm saying is that I think that it would be helpful and that's why I'm here. I don't get paid. I don't come, I come here as a, as a, as a, as a, as a sixth generation citizen of Santa Clara County whose family literally built this city with their bodies. There was three movements that were spawned from South Sequebres, little, little neighborhood. The farm workers movement, the lowrider movement, and the Chicano movement. All three of the most, one of, some of the most powerful Mexican-American movements of the twentieth century have their roots in that barrio. And so, uh, like I said, I avail myself to, to the, uh, to the city of Cupertino to at least help, maybe just gain some understanding, maybe not agreement, but that you understand why these things are happening. Because I know that I'm dealing with people that are, uh, that have conscience, that have ethics, that are moral people, and that have reason. And I think that if we use those as the principal guides by which to, uh, govern the conversations, I think that there could be something beneficial on both ends in terms of understanding, comprehension, and how we may be able to coexist in that context. Because as a county, thank you, as a county, we're, we're, we're under a significant paradigm and cultural shift. And I think we can fill that. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Next speaker is Callan User Three. Callan User Three, I will, um, allow you to talk. You'll need to hit star six in order to unmute yourself.
Um, thank you, um, dear mayor and council member and the guest and the residents. And this is just a little update and, um, because we want, um, thanks for your, all your, uh, constant, um, understanding and help. Um, we recently, um, I've tried, uh, for the little, uh, police structure in the back. Uh, we, um, just tried not to give, have any confusing. Uh, we spanned the, um, passed the one, the recently torn down permit and this permit. Initially, the city didn't want to give because, uh, then, um, they say, uh, it's not required, not co-required it. Um, so then now they, they give and, uh, um, we also add a little lighting to it. We don't have just to, um, so they can, you know, have, um, something they, you know, even though it's not required before, they have something they probably, you know, will give. So, um, and, uh, now we, um, just, um, because the person who built it was, uh, already moved away and he has a regular job and, um, um, and so, and so it takes some time to, um, put some, uh, electrical stuff. Um, so, and also just create, uh, just give some time to do that. And, uh, um, since there's so many, uh, the little, um, structure, uh, police structure, whatever shit out there, I mean, the front, the back, you, you guys see a picture before, lot in the city, nobody cares. And this one, um, you know, deliberately actually was a miniature little placings and it's, you can't live there because it's so small. And there was not even the, um, adult, uh, heights, uh, required to can walk on. So really have not very much use, um, there. And we actually paid so much, uh, like, people have, uh, like, a bigger, uh, few sound, you know, addition there, but this one, of course, not. So, um, during this COVID time, so it's already, uh, suffer quite bad. So we just hope, uh, you actually, um, um, some, also in face, um, to work with us and don't push, um, any further, um, hardship on us. And, uh, um, and just, um, um, just, that's all I wish. And give us some, uh, time, um, to, uh, work out. And, um, um, again, thanks for your understanding and, uh, it, it means doing the process. Um, thanks for everyone. And now, uh, turn the meeting back to you. Thank you, Mayor and the council, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Our next speaker is Mary, followed by Tushar Shinda. Welcome, Mary.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor Paul and council members. My name is Mary and I've been a resident of Cupertino for almost thirty years. Um, I've heard that council members of some cities don't think guns are an issue in their community. Perhaps they believe that the scary events that we hear about on the news only happen in other communities, but we know now this is not true for Cupertino. Last week, a child brought an unserialized semi-automatic firearm to Homestead High School. This was an extremely close call. Our city could have been the next mass school shooting. And saying this is not stretching the truth too far. So what should be our response? We must take reasonable steps to protect our community. We should not look the other way and pretend that scary firearm incidents don't or can't happen here. Safe firearm storage has been associated with reduced accidental firearm injury, reduced suicides and homicides, reduced firearm theft, and reduced mass shootings. A safe firearm storage ordinance simply requires firearm owners to store their firearms in a locked safe or with a locking device so that unauthorized persons do not have access. Let's join our neighboring cities. Just this month, Palo Alto, Los Altos Hills and Los Altos brought to nine the total number of cities in Santa Clara County with safe storage of firearms ordinances. Our county is catching up to the thirteen in San Mateo County. Let's pass a safe firearm storage ordinance to protect our Cupertino communities. If we're not willing to take this simple step, then shame on us. The recent incident of a firearm at our local high school should be a wake-up call. Cupertino is not immune to firearm tragedies. I thank you all for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mary. Our next and final speaker under oral communications is Tushar Shinda. Welcome.
Uh, hi. Uh, thanks, city staff, mayor and council members for giving me this opportunity to bring to your notice, uh, discrepancies in our, uh, noise ordinance. Uh, I recently studied the noise ordinance of the cities, uh, Los Altos, Santa Clara, Sunnyvale, Alameda County and Los Angeles. And I found, uh, three major discrepancies that in my opinion deserves broad discretion and research. I have forwarded my presentation and findings to the city and requested it to be put on the agenda to have that discussion, but I wasn't able to get it on the agenda. Um, so I'll just pick out those three major discrepancies that I wanted to highlight. Uh, one is Cupertino is the only city which differentiate point of origin and receiving land uses. This makes things very tricky. Example, even if the distance between residential property and commercial property is just a few inches, just because the noise point of origin is commercial, the enforcement officer has to use higher noise level, sixty-five and fifty-five dB a day and night respectively. This is unfair to the residents. Imagine if fifty-four dB a level during night hours coming from west side of commercial property and just, which is just a few inches away from the residential property. But that doesn't violate ordinance. However, if the same noise level made from the units at the same distance on the east side, then it violates the ordinance violation. So, so this is, this is the only, Cupertino is the only city which differentiate origin and receiving. All other cities are, you, uh, only use receiving. And I put, uh, all the evidence and links on the, my presentation that I forwarded to city manager and city clerk. And I believe it's been forwarded to mayor as well. Uh, then the second, uh, discrepancy is the CMC ordinance doesn't factor in the distance between two properties. It treats same noise standards, it commercial property just two feet away or fifty feet away. The third discrepancy is other city ordinances set noise level violation for continuous noise at much lower level, around forty-five dB a, than for the intermittent noise. So if the impact of noise is, is not just on the ears, it's beyond. It's difficult falling asleep, inability to stay asleep, waking up too early. And according to twenty eighteen review, short-term exposure to noise pollution can temporarily raise blood pressure and increase blood viscosity. Finally, I'll end to, I'll end with two questions. What is the process to get topics like this on the council meeting agenda? And another question I have is can the city form a committee at least to conduct further research about the discrepancies in the noise ordinance that I pointed out today?
Thanks very much. Okay, uh, we'll bring it back to council. And at this point, we're on to item number four. Item number four are, uh, brief reports on council member activities as well as brief announcements. Uh, and by brief, we mean, um, everyone is allocated about a minute. And so, uh, I'll go by hands. Would anyone like to go first? And I see that council member Wei has her hand raised. Council member Wei.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So I'm going to be, try to brief. Um, I attended the MTC ABAC Plan Bay Area Twenty Twenty webinar and it's expanding partnerships and also equity-focused discussions and it's very enlightening. And on September twelfth, I went to the second Taiwan Center for Mandarin Learning opening. So it's really great. They're offering Mandarin learning for adults. And I attended, uh, on September fourteenth, the State of the District address by a COSD Superintendent Stacy Yao. We all know Cupertino Union School District is working really hard to reorganize their schools. So this is an important topic. It was really good discussions and also good information from COSD. And on September sixteenth, I, um, co-moderated with Santa Clara County, Santa Clara City, um, Council Kevin Park on the AAPA Mental Health Forum. So I will say a little bit more on when this item comes up. And I am very happy to have attended the Assembly Member Evan Lowe's, uh, seven million dollar giveaway, um, from funding for Wi-Fi from federal, uh, funding at, in Los Gatos on September eighteenth. It was really a very joyful, um, you know, occasion that seven million dollars for Wi-Fi go to the West Valley Cities of Campbell, Cupertino, uh, Los Gatos, Montessorino and Saratoga. And I'm very happy that our, uh, emergency manager, Thomas Chin, was also there. So it's good to see you there, Tom. And on September nineteenth, um, our, uh, very own, look, Cupertino Library Foundation hosted the Senior Housing Speaker Series. And I was honored to co-moderate with Henry Sen. I think this is a very important topic for Cupertino. So, um, that's my report. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Wei. Um, try, try to curate your selection in the future so as not to use the bulk of our five minutes. Um, Councilmember Willie, you're, uh, next. Welcome.
Yeah, I, I'd like to just, uh, touch on what, uh, a couple of our residents. Uh, thank, um, Mary for bringing up the, uh, uh, safe storage of firearms. But we've had emails from two other, uh, residents, uh, Kelly Traver and, uh, Lorraine Jacobs, also concerned about safe storage. So I want to let them know that, yes, I, I hear. And at the end of the meeting, when we ask for agenda item, I'm going to suggest that and hope that I get support because we do need more than one councilman to get a future agenda item. Also mentioned that, uh, to Tushar and the noise concern, I'm going to look at the material that he's presented. It's too soon to say what its, uh, direction should be in our community, but at least I'll take a look at it. So to the community, thank you for bringing these items and the other ones via email to our attention because we, we care about what's important to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Um, I'll go. So I actually had about five items I wanted to report out on that weren't committee items. I'm going to skip all that. You know, I was really, I was really moved by, um, you know, member of the public talking about redlining. And this is not the first time, uh, he's spoken about it, but I did, uh, go and, and take a look. So I want to dedicate my minute or so to that. Um, you know, quick Google search states, quote, "In the United States, redlining is the systematic denial of various services to residents of specific, often racially associated neighborhoods or communities, either explicitly or through the selective raising of prices," end quote. So that comes off the Wikipedia entry and, you know, I, I think that's, it's very moving. You, you know, th- this is a, a, an extremely nuanced subject with regard to racial dynamics. Um, but when I look at a community like ours, I often think that, yeah, we're often, you know, looked at and I think very unfairly persecuted or taken advantages, uh, advantaged of because of, you know, uh, demographics. And so I stand in total solidarity with the experiences and the, um, you know, the, 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 the pain that's being relayed there. Uh, so, so thank you. Thank you for bringing that to the forefront. Um, I'll go on to Vice Mayor Chow. Vice Mayor Chow.
Hello. Yeah. Actually, I've heard Cupertino back in nineteen seventy is, or, or even earlier, is a community that's undesirable. It's very cheap. And, uh, other areas, Campbell and Sunnyvale was, has more higher housing prices than, things change. So I'm curious how, um, yeah, how things, redlining, if from nineteen thirties affect any things today. And so I'd like to report on the eleventh. Uh, I attended the, the former Fall Festival and Festival, and now it's named Day and Night Festival. And now, uh, Rotary Club hosted that, not only during the, in the morning, they also had live band at night. And then we had the Art Commission host, uh, art contest. So on behalf of mayor, I picked out a winner. And yeah, so thank you Rotary and a lot of volunteers for making this amazing event possible. It was extremely well attended and this, each city department also had a booth to provide a lot of, uh, brochures, information for the residents and the police and the fire station. And another thing that I'd like everyone's attention that, um, Thursday, COSD Board Meeting, um, the Superintendent Stacy will propose a potential school closing plan, likely identifying sites or cho-chosen for potential closure for this year. And that's just the first phase and seems that they have plans to co-close more the next, uh, two, three years. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. All right. Um, you know, I, I have in my notes, since we've kind of reordered a little bit of our, um, items, to, uh, check in with, with our interim city manager, Greg. Did you have any follow-up that you wanted to speak to based upon, uh, council comments on item number four or from oral communications?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'll just follow up on one of the public speakers. Staff is also reviewing the documents submitted by our speaker on our noise ordinance and the differences between our ordinance and the other jurisdictions. And we'll be reporting back on that review over the next few weeks to the council.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Our next item, item number five, is our report on committee assignments. And committee assignments are our specific assigned committees at the beginning of the calendar year. Would, um, and we have ten minutes allocated for this. And so would anyone from, uh, council like to provide their summary of activities since our last regular meeting on September seventh related to committee assignments? If not, I will go ahead and state that, uh, on September sixteenth, I attended the VTA SSTPO. That's Safety, Security and Transit Planning and Operations. Uh, there were a number of items discussed, including, uh, the plans as relates to COVID and reopening. Um, uh, essentially as, uh, relates to those, um, VTA is following guidance from, uh, from county, state and, and the federal, uh, government. And so the requirements, uh, from, from those in an effort to assure uniformity are what's going to be driving. Uh, I did ask a question about if, uh, a particular city ends up, um, imposing some requirements, uh, would that actually end up affecting the agency since the agency, of course, is operating within our cities? And, um, you know, the answer was essentially, um, that there is a certain degree of preemption that for uniformity's sake. Um, but, but I think that it is a, a, a very good, um, practice for us to keep on, um, being very thoughtful and, uh, measured about how we approach issues of, of safety. And I know that that has an influence, uh, and, you know, various agencies and, uh, their boards and public interact with each other. On, uh, the seventeenth, I attended a VTA workshop. Um, we had a number of other, uh, discussions as well. Um, uh, there, there was the tragedy, uh, of There was the tragedy of the, of the, of the shooting in the rail yard. Light rail has been reopened completely. And, you know, it's, it's an ongoing set of challenges that we face on the agency. On, on a different note, much more forward looking in terms of our future transit, is the idea of what we do with our bus fleet. And what they're looking to do is to either electrify or switch over to a hydrogen electric hybrid system. Either entails quite a bit of funding and money. But I think that rather than look at a multi-decade horizon, they've taken a much more measured approach for the time being, which is essentially to examine the shorter routes and substitute those out with electric buses. And the reason that becomes a lot easier to do, of course, is that if you have a longer route, those battery capacities or the recharging issue becomes more of a pressing need. And the associated infrastructure, of course, is quite expensive. So for the time being, being, you know, in the next five or six years, there's going to be a focus on swapping out some of the, the shorter routes with, with electrified buses. Anyone else? I see Councilmember Willie and Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Willie?
Yeah, so of course, always important is, you know, the carbon footprint and trying to go to renewable energy. So on the eighth, the meeting for the Silicon Valley Clean Energy. And so good news for the community in the sense that we covered the budget for the next fiscal year. And the 1% discount, you know, which is a savings to those in the community that rely on Silicon Valley Clean Energy over what they would be paying if they were relying on PG&E. So that stays intact. The budget also looked out over all of our items and staying financially beneficial. So with that being said, in the future, we would like to increase that discount, but at the current time, we're just not able to do it. We also discussed the work plan over the next year and trying to grow Silicon Valley Clean Energy so that we can handle more clean energy projects, get more of the residents involved in using Silicon Valley Clean Energy for their power supply. So with that being said, that's it for this month. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Next, we have Councilmember Moore.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Paul. So going back to September 9th, which is prior to the meeting, which the board held, which you are a member of. I chaired the VTA PAC, and we discussed and had some recommendations regarding the zero emission bus transition, which it needs to take place by 2040. And as you stated, they're looking at battery electric or hydrogen fuel cell buses, which are very expensive, on the order of 800,000 to about 1.3 million per bus. So one of the things that we were concerned about on the PAC was how green these technologies are and what's going to happen to the lithium ion batteries at the end of life. And, and how much energy does it require with regards to the hydrogen fuel cell production? And where will the hydrogen fuel cell be recharged essentially? We had a discussion, a really interesting discussion about the 101 Corridor Mobility Action Plan. And we actually did not accept the report because the cities of Gilroy and Morgan Hill were not included in it. And it was a very interesting discussion that we had there. On the 13th, the Vice Mayor and myself, we comprised the Legislative Review Committee. We discussed AB 1174 and recommended an opposed position. And then we met again on the 17th and had a discussion about upcoming special city council meeting with local legislators, which hopefully we have coming up in October, and a town hall on the legislative process to continue the public outreach and education about the legislative process. And I did, I left this off in the, the previous item, but I did attend the Urban Forestry Alliance meeting on September 9th. Really, I, it was a long meeting, but at the end of it, I was highly motivated to see that we get more trees in the community. And then on the end of the day, September 9th, I was attended the Cities Association, which appointed, we had some elections there. And we also discussed a complicated issue with regards to the Airport Noise Roundtable. And that's it. Thank you.
Great. Thanks very much, Councilmember Moore. I don't see any further hands raised, and so we'll go on to item number six. Item number six is the city manager update. That's a city manager update on emergency response efforts as well as other city business. Endorm City Manager Larson, take it away.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and members of council and the public. First, for the COVID update, generally, the situation appears to be improving, and there's reason to be cautiously optimistic. Three key data points. California has now reached the lowest case rate in the nation. Santa Clara County has returned to the case rate of last July. And Cupertino continues to have the lowest case rate in Santa Clara County. And our vaccination rates remain very high. We're portions of the city at 100%, and our lowest rate of vaccination is 81% in one area of the city. However, we're continuing to support county services. Testing resumed in Cupertino a week ago, and it will be returning again on Monday, October 4th and Monday, October 18th. And residents can sign up for testing through the county. And vaccinations have now been approved nationally for third doses for immunocompromised and those over 65 years of age. And there's further progress on youth vaccination as test results are being released. I also, with the mayor's permission, have expanded the update because we wanted to start sharing some of the public events that are available to our residents. So this weekend at Memorial Park, we have Billy Hut, a spectacular Indian festival with an array of market vendors on Saturday, the 25th, from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The weekend after, we have our pooch plunge, which is on Saturday, October 2nd, at Blackberry Farm Pools, where it's an opportunity for our pooches to swim, splash, and plunge into the water. Pre-registration is required and can be found at the city website. And admission is $5 per dog. I guess humans are free. So that's, and then that same weekend starts Shakespeare in the Park with Pericles, the prince of Tyre, performing at the Memorial Park Amphitheater on October 2nd and 3rd, and returning the following weekend on the 8th, 9th, and 10th. It's approximately a 90-minute performance. Admission is free. And the last one I wanted to mention is after our next council meeting, but pre-registration is required, so we wanted to mention it tonight. And that's at the Popular Monster Mash is returning on Friday, October 20th, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. This kid-friendly Halloween bash is for parents and children 12 years old and under with games, spooky crafts, and trick-or-treating. So again, pre-registration is required for the Monster Mash on October 20th. And last, as a follow-up to our last council meeting, two weeks ago, on September 7th, the council heard an update on the Valco Development Project. And I know there is quite a bit of discussion about an anticipated request for an extension by the property owner, which we did receive, and that the city staff would then be considering the extension of the project for one year. However, AB 1174, that was mentioned previously by Councilmember Moore, was adopted by the state government and preempts any local action on that extension. That concludes the manager's report. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Endorm City Manager Larson. And Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand up. Did you have a quick comment or question?
I don't know if I missed it. Did you mention October 9th, we will have Cupertino? The Team Commission will host 12 o'clock at noon on Saturday, October 9th, Cupertino event. They will have booths for mental health activities. Thank you.
I didn't announce that, but we will include the information on our website.
Excellent. And I will note that there is one more council meeting before then, so there's an opportunity to so indicate. Okay, great. Well, thank you.
And then the staff will receive an award for Cupertino event this, this week at the League of City event. So we have to reach that.
Yeah, I think that's repeats on politics as well as Cupertino. Is that right?
Yeah, I think both.
Okay. Yeah. Well, thank you for accepting that on behalf of Cupertino Vice Mayor. Unfortunately, I need to drive back for a, for a court hearing on Thursday morning, and then I'll be heading back to Sacramento. But that unfortunately coincides with the time when we're supposed to be accepting the award. A lot of great things happening in Cupertino. And so hopefully, everyone leans into the good and true press, such as it is generated. We now have items number seven through 15, and that comprises our consent calendar. First, I'd like to check in with council. Would anyone, first off, like to poll any item on consent? I see a hand raised from Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Paul. We did see a letter from a member of the public to, to pull the housing element update. I believe that's item 15?
Okay. Let's go ahead and I'll, I'll take that as your request to poll item number 15. Is there any other item? I see you've muted yourself, and I don't see any other hands up from council. Let me go to the members of the public. Jennifer Griffin, I see your hand is up, and I won't put this on a timer. Did you want to speak to pulling any items on our consent calendar? And again, that's items number seven through 15.
Yes, Mayor Darcy. This is Jennifer Griffin. And I had, Councilmember Moore was correct. I did send a letter, email, I think about a week ago, asking to pull number 15 from consent calendar. And that is the only one that I wanted to have pulled at this time. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Jennifer. And I see another hand raised from Jean Bedord. Jean, did you want to speak to this item as well in terms of pulling any other item from consent other than 15, since we're already pulling that?
No, I wish to speak on 15. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. So let's take it back to council. Will anyone be willing to move items seven through 14 as recommended on our agenda? I see councilmembers Moore and Willie have their hands raised in sequence. And so Councilmember Moore, would you like to move the item?
Yes, so moved.
Okay, Councilmember Willie, would you like to second?
Second it, yes.
Excellent. I don't see any further hands raised for consent items seven through 14. And so Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call vote for those items on our consent calendar?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. And so we are on to item number 15. The subject is to initiate sixth cycle general plan housing element update. Consider consultant agreement to complete the sixth cycle general plan housing element update, related rezoning, and all necessary environmental review as required under state law, and associated budget modification. And I believe that our Director of Planning, i.e. Community Development, Ben Foo, is back here. Ben, did you want to provide us the summary on this item?
Yes, Mayor. We actually have a team of staff here to assist and answer questions as well. Thank you, Mayor, for the introduction. Ben Foo, Director of Community Development. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Mr. City Manager, and the City Council, as well as the public, for entertaining this item. For this item, I will also introduce Erica, Erica Poveta, planner from our Community Development Department, who's been managing this contract process and also this RFQ process for, to secure a consultant to assist the city on the housing element update. Erica, we pulled up her presentation, go over the details about this process and what we've gone through. And we'll also discuss the contract as well. As you may be aware, we initiated this process earlier in 2021, early this year, with our first iteration of the RFQ sending out. The prep work really started winter of last year, 2020. We went through a couple of different rounds of RFQ, and we're able to secure this particular consultant to assist the city. We'll also talk about sort of budget modifications as well, which I'll be happy to address. With that, I'll let, go ahead and let Erica start with the discussion, and we're here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you. I just wanted to confirm that you can all see my screen before I continue.
Yes, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Erica Poveta, Associate Planner. And tonight, I'm here to present on the sixth cycle housing element update and related budget modification. The housing element is a required element of the city's general plan. And per state law, it is required to be updated every eight years to plan for accommodating the housing needs for all segments of the community. The current housing element update is considered the sixth cycle, which covers the planning period of 2023 to 2031. In order to complete the update by January 31st, 2023, and comply with state law, staff is recommending that council authorize initiation of the sixth cycle housing element update. Staff conducted multiple RFP efforts between April and July in an effort to receive proposals from qualified consultants to assist the city in completing a housing element update, related rezoning, and all necessary environmental review as required under state law. After thoroughly reviewing proposals, staff held interviews with the most qualified firms in mid-August and conducted reference checks. Following these efforts, staff is recommending EMC Planning Group as the lead consultant for this project. And since the contract amount is greater than 175,000, city council approval is required to authorize the city manager to execute the contract. The total consultant proposal and related project expenses is estimated at 1,69,248, which exceeds the existing adopted project budget of 295,000 for the fiscal year of 2021 to 2022. Staff is therefore requesting a budget modification number 2122-165 to increase the project appropriations by 774,248 to accommodate for estimated consultant project cost, project noticing, legal review fees, and a 20% project contingency. The additional appropriations will be funded from the unassigned fund balance in the city's general fund, which was estimated at 35.7 million. And it should also be noted that the city has been awarded a total of $352,613 in grant funding from HCD and Aback MTC, which will be included as revenue. So here we have a more detailed project estimate, which highlights the grant funding from HCD and Aback MTC. The grants are reimbursement-based funds and are to be applied to the housing element update process. An estimated project expense breakdown is also included, which accounts for the housing element consultant contract, citywide noticing, legal review fees, and a project contingency. Given the significance of the housing element update, staff therefore recommends that city council initiate the sixth cycle housing element update, award a consultant agreement for the sixth cycle general plan housing element update, related rezoning, and all necessary environmental review as required under state law, authorize city manager to execute the consultant agreement based on the scope of work with EMC Planning Group for an amount not to exceed $748,040. for an amount not to exceed seven hundred forty-eight thousand forty dollars. Uh, authorize uh the city manager to approve no-cost contract change orders with EMC Planning Group, um, and approve budget modification number twenty-one twenty-two dash one six five to increase appropriations by seven hundred seventy-four thousand two hundred forty-eight and increase revenues by three hundred fifty-two thousand six hundred thirteen for the sixth cycle general plan housing element update, related rezoning, public noticing, legal cons counsel, and all necessary environmental review as required under state law. Thank you. That concludes your presentation.
I see our interim city manager hand raised. Greg, did you want to make a comment at this point?
Yes, I just wanted to uh add kind of a another note. First, uh, since I came on board as your interim city manager, as I've discussed with many council members, this is a critical path item for the city to get our housing element done, to meet the state mandate, and bringing the consultant on board was the necessary first step, and staff redoubled their efforts this summer to bring on a qualified consultant, who I should point out is also doing the housing element for two other cities in Santa Clara County. Um, I also wanted to highlight that it's our intention with the approval of the consultant contract to return to council for a study session in October regarding the public engagement and outreach process in the timeline for the project going forward. But we needed to have the consultant on board before we could bring that back to you. Thank you.
So wha- what accounts for the discrepancy in the original budget and the price right now? And for these other cities that this proposed consultant is servicing, are there um are there charge schemes similar?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Mrs. City Manager, if I may, um, take a take a stab at responding to your question, Mr. Um, Sir Mayor, that's a good question. So uh, the way we we budget items, it's it's not uh, we we heard some claims are over budget, or it's not over budget because we haven't started a project uh yet. So we originally had budgeted the project around nine hundred thousand, and the uh three hundred thousand each split between different functions and different uh work program items, whether it's arena uh or formal housing strategies or or grants. Um, we then recently found out that those grants are reimbursed are reimbursable only, so we can't really use them upfront, so that accounts for for additional money coming back to council asking for that. And also, uh, some items did not make it to the priority list of our program, so that those budgets did not follow through with that as well. Uh, we also wanted to come back to council with, well, we have a proposal, so we know the exact dollar amount uh that that that's necessary for the project, uh, so that we don't, uh, so we can we can propose a an amount that's real- realistic and reasonable. Uh, we've seen other cities, uh, with different amounts, different projects. Well, it kind of depends, uh, right? Uh, uh, if the city has already uh areas allocated to satisfy the arena numbers, uh, then they wouldn't need as an extensive uh housing element update. Cupertino is not one of those, right? So we we need to look at sites, we need to identify some sites, and then identify the um the density. So that requires more work than a city already has those zones identified already in their city. Also, too, depending on, and we can't speak to details about what the budget is like or or contracts for other contractors and and other cities, but every city has different needs, different level of resources allocation. Some city is much bigger than us, uh, whether it's in size or uh or a number of residents uh or uh staffing. So that that would account for the need for either a more comprehensive study or not. Uh, that's um up for speculation, obviously. So that's what would, the difference would be between our our amount versus some you see some other cities' amounts.
Well, yeah, let me go on to Councilmember Moore, followed by Councilmember Willie. Councilmember Moore?
Okay, um, thank you, Ben. Yeah, I was a little concerned about that particular slide because it made it look as though the the estimate was was pretty significantly uh different from what uh it it's actually going to cost us. Uh, I I'm curious how many proposals that we received. Uh, that's my first question. If I could have a quick answer for that one, I want to get on to the the more important question I have. So.
I can answer that, then. Uh, we received a total of uh six proposals.
Six, okay. Thank you. Um, and then I I'm a little concerned about Task K, the SEQA documentation, uh, and it's assuming a uh initial study mitigated negative declaration um with an optional contingency budget to cover the costs for a full environmental impact report. And maybe this is a question for the city attorney. Uh, so if we if we had a site um that we suspect has contamination on it, is that something that would um uh flip the MND into an EIR situation? Suppose we had, as as we do, suppose we have a really large site and and that and it needs mitigation, um, and the mitigation could take even perhaps even longer than the the eight years to to get to um residential screening levels. Uh, would that impact what kind of an uh a SEQA document we need? Um, so I don't really understand why we would flip to an EIR.
Yeah, so it's it's, so it's 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 hard to uh, you know, predict why a project would flip to an EIR, and that, I mean, that's the re- one of the reasons you do an initial study. Um, a project that's already improved, um, you know, wo- wouldn't be part of the scope of a a a of the project, this project, the 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 SEQA project that that's going forward. So I don't think that would impact it. Um, there's also um a a different level of review and analysis of those site-specific issues that is required for this kind of programmatic document as opposed to an EIR for a specific project, which might require um uh or or any kind of SEQA document for a specific doc- project might require a deeper level of analysis. So um, so without sort of prejudicing prejudicing the outcome of the initial study, I I think that's why why the 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 uh contract is structured that way.
Um, if I could continue on line of questioning. So we have um, for instance, a a dry cleaner site that we know of. We have a historical uh dry cleaner site. We have an open case dry cleaner site, um, that's being cleaned up right now. What would prevent us or are we prevented from um designating those um as housing uh housing locations? And would that, does that make any difference, having that knowledge, for whether or not those sites would would require us to have an EIR for the um for the entire housing element?
So, I mean, it's difficult to answer those questions in the abstract. I say, I mean, the question that that you would answer for any aspect of the housing element, including that one, is whether there is an impact and, you know, whether it can be mitigated to a less than significant level. Uh, there are e- even on on contaminated sites, there are 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 many recognized ways to mitigate those impacts. So, um, but but I I do think it's a very difficult question to answer in the abstract.
Okay, so is is there, do cities set as a policy that if they if they know that there is uh high potential for contamination, that they would not um select those particular sites for housing? Or or do they just go ahead and even if it's a gas station or not, where we we need to designate these sites and um and and we're going to go with a an MND because we are going to make the assumption that it can be mitigated and not really knowing in the end um if if it can be?
So so I'll I'll say once again, to piggyback on uh city attorney's comments, obviously, it's hard to, for us to speculate that particular situation, but we obviously, I think, as 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 any city would do, is you try to identify sites uh that are more housing uh friendly. So, but, you know, depending on the on the on the city and the location of the city, you may have a limited those those kind of sites available. So you have to start looking at other sites as well, and 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 consider the environmental impacts of those sites.
Okay, next we have Councilmember Willie.
Okay, yeah, I'm I'm actually pretty uh uh happy that we pulled this. Um, this is very important to our city and to our residents. And so I I want to be sure that we, I, and the residents are up to speed. When we talked about this uh before, uh, it sounded like we were lagging the other uh cities around us, that they had already found their consultants. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but I want to be sure that we all understand where we were and then where we're now at. And that we weren't getting responses from consultants because they were already tied up uh with the other cities. So that being said, uh, now that we've got six, it sounds like we're catching up, six quotes, so that sounds good. I'd like to know two more things. One is kind of uh in addition to Mayor Paul's. I'd I'd really like to know, you know, a million dollars. Yes, uh, Councilman uh Moore also brought up such a discrepancy. Um, the appearance of a discrepancy of that large magnitude would really, gee whiz, were all the consultants uh that were reasonably priced used up and were uh faced with, you know, the higher price quotes? Can you compare our price, being just over a million dollars, to what the other comparable cities around us are? Hearing the numbers would really help us to understand, you know, it's tax dollars that we're spending. And then the second question, again, of the lagging, feeling that we're lagging a little bit. Do you, can you make a few comments about the consultant's schedule? Yes, we have a hard end date uh where it has to all be approved by January of twenty twenty-three. But how about the schedule between now and then? How does the consultant's schedule look? Is there going to be adequate time for the resident engagement? Adequate time for city staff to be uh crafting, identifying sites, and doing all that? A couple of those comments or answers, I think, would help us to know where we're really at. Are we in good shape or uh still lagging a little bit? Thank you.
Sure. Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, thank you, Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Willie, for your question. Yes, we we heard those those claims as well, and as I was attempting to address um earlier uh in in the presentation. Two, two things. One, uh, in terms of the in terms of the the amounts, we'll have to look at what uh other cities' contracts, and if we can get a copy of the contract, evaluate the contract, uh, and understand what went into them. Uh, but like I said, every city is a little bit different. If if we of our, if a city already has adequate sites designated for, say, oh, the extreme, a hundred thousand units, for example, and and the new arena numbers fall within those numbers, then the amount of work, reasonable work that needs to be done, it's, you can understand, is less than a city that has, for example, zero and been allocated a hundred thousand units, right? It's a very extreme example. It's not what we are. I'm just saying. Uh, so every city is a little bit different in terms of their needs and where they're at, in terms of city layout, in terms of size to city, um, resources uh on on that one as well. And I see that Mr. City Manager, uh, unmuted yourself, did you wanted to to back me up on this?
When you're done.
Okay. Uh, so so that could that could account for uh for one of the discrepancies in terms of the of the pricing, uh, the contract amount itself, in terms of whether whether city staff uh just misbudgeted or mishandled the budget. That that would, that's entirely untrue. Uh, we we could have come forward with just straight up a million dollars, but it would just be, it would be a guess, right? And at that point, we'll have to be responsible responding to why you budget for a million dollars. We wouldn't know. Uh, so what we did is we budgeted for bits and pieces of the whole program and some of the tasks that we know we have to do. Uh, and so, and and where they fall, they fall. And if we can consolidate those 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 numbers, we we would do that. Also, counting on some of the grant funds that we know we're getting. Uh, unfortunately, by the time we get those funds, um, we get the details of those funds, and like I said, they're they're reimbursable, so we can't pay them upfront. For example, for the contract, we can't just pay it upfront to the consultant, have them uh start work. We have to reimburse after fact. So therefore, we're asking for that money ahead of time, so we can pay, and then we can reimburse uh the city as part of the fund. And in terms of the uh uh scheduling, uh, yes, it is true that a couple of cities in our county have have obtained uh uh contractors earlier on, I think, early to twenty twenty-one and late twenty twenty. That is, that is true. But uh, remember, there's fifteen cities or so in our county. Uh, so we start our process around that time as well, uh, working on the RFP program uh documentation, uh, reaching out on our own to uh to our list, to the to the contractors that we know of. Uh, so we did that two rounds. We didn't receive any any bits. I can't say why what that is. Uh, but then uh, we did receive more this time around with the help of our interim city manager and do more outreach on our staff as well. We probably called uh quite a bit, uh, just reaching out to them as well. Uh, so that's sort of the difference is our our latest ra- latest round of outreach is much, much more uh robust and aggressive, if you will say. Uh, we spent hours and hours uh calling upwards of a hundred different companies. So that's why we're going to get more responses this time around. Uh, but in terms of being consistent, I think a number of the cities are on the same track as well. As you can see, some uh EMC is also in a contract uh process with a couple of the cities. So we're we're sort of caught up, if you will, uh, to use your words, uh, Councilmember Willie, uh, to 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 the process. And there's ample time, we spoke with staff, spoke with, spoken with EMC. Uh, there's ample time to to conduct this process and and that their ability having to work with other cities in our county and just just familiar with with our county is going to help with the process and the timeline as well. So hopefully that answered your question a little bit, and I know, uh, Mr. Larson may be able to add a little bit more.
And if I may follow on, Mr. Mayor, from one comment. I was really pleased with the round of the RFP process that occurred since I began. Staff did aggressive outreach, including myself calling firms to encourage them to apply and telling a good story about Cupertino um and our role in Silicon Valley and what this community has going for it. And I was pleased when we got six firms in. Staff reviewed those paper proposals. They chose three firms as finalists to interview. Two of those firms were chosen as the top finalists to do reference checks and ultimately came to me for um a a final decision, which of the two firms to go with. And to the councilman's point in particular, one of the key differentiators for the firm we're recommending is that they could start immediately, while the other top firm, which had other great strengths, would have had a delayed start on our housing element project. And I think that tipped the scales for us going with EMC. They're both qualified, plus they could start sooner because we want to come back to you in October with that timeline going forward.
Great, thank you very much, City Manager and Ben. That really brings things up to date. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Vice Mayor Chow?
Hello. So, um, I have three major questions regarding the scope of work. But first, I'd like to clarify some information. Um, I think uh someone sent in an email um of a newsletter claiming that the city was over a hundred firms, quote, I'm quoting, over a hundred firms declined to respond to the city's RFP. Um, so I wonder, is that true? How would a community member know how many firms declined to respond? Could you clarify?
Uh, uh, to be honest, Vice Mayor, I wouldn't know how anybody would know if anybody declined to 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 submit. If 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 they choose not to submit, they would simply choose not to submit a proposal. They would necessarily contact the city and say, "Thank you for your interest, but I declined to submit." Uh, so we would, we wouldn't, wouldn't know that.
So that's false information? That the community members should have even, even the city staff would not know how many people declined to respond, right?
Uh, all I can know is.
It's not known.
Yeah.
So we didn't receive any response earlier for whatever reason, because maybe we started too late. But then this time with Greg's uh more aggressive outreach, we were able to get six uh proposals.
I do wanna clarify, Vice Mayor, we did not start too late. We started pretty early in the process in the last, last winter, so we did not start too late.
Okay, so.
And I wanna clarify.
Yeah.
And I wanna give the kudos to staff for doing the outreach. I did a couple calls, but they had already called most of the firms I was gonna call by the time I started calling. So I appreciate the recognition, and I really wanna give it to Ben and his team for the, I think you told me, Ben, it was roughly thirty calls. Your, your staff did, and I had a couple firms on that list I was calling as well.
Okay, great. Thank you for clarifying. Thank you, Ben and Greg, for your leadership. And we didn't start too late and, but the good thing is, at the end, we now finally found a good consultant that, that could start right away. That's really good to know. And how, so how many city planners will be working on the housing element? Do we have enough staff?
Good question, Vice Mayor Chow. We're, we're, we're working on that. Your, your planning division team has a total of seven planners, including the planning manager herself as well. That's significantly less than, than other cities that we've seen cited in these emails and correspondence, whether it's Palo Alto or Mountain, you know, they at least double our, our account. Just for the contract process itself, we deployed two of our planners and the housing planner, along with two of the managers, to do the outreach. So it's five staffers to, to conduct outreach, thirty-plus firms and multiple rounds calls for some of the firms. So it is pretty labor-intensive, but we, we are going through a recruitment process to, to fill a senior planner position that we hope will be able to help us lead this project as well. And of course, with, with a, with a consultant, that would, that would be a bit of a help as well.
Great, thank you. So will all the communications with the consultants to and from city staff and to and from property owners be ceded to the city for public records?
Yeah, absolutely.
Is that included in the contract?
Um, I'm not sure. I mean, Erica, I'm not sure if specifically calls out that portion, that item in the contract, but we can certainly, certainly add that.
Yeah, can we formally include that so that it's not, it's, they understand it's a requirement? And then is there an itemized breakdown of the cost? That I see that they, it's nice, they break it down into different tasks. Is there itemized breakdown of the cost?
Yes, if, if, if I may, I'll let Erica talk the more details about that one.
All right, I can go ahead and share my screen. So we do have, I'm sorry. So we do have the, the itemized budget breakdown by task as well as optional task. And this is within the contract scope and budget attachment with the agenda packet.
Oh, is that in the agenda packet?
Yes, it's, it's page forty of Attachment B.
Oh, I was looking at that, I didn't see, so it's further down, okay.
Yes.
Fine, that up later. So regarding the scope of work, I see that rezoning is considered an optional task, which means that the current estimate doesn't include any cost in case we need to upzone a certain site. And I'm guessing. I'm guessing when we need to upzone is it when we need a full EIR, is that why it's included? Could you clarify?
In terms of our budget estimate for this contract, we have included the optional tasks of rezoning and EIR per SEQA. So those are already included in, in the cost.
Oh, so the cost of seven hundred fifty thousand include the EIR, a full EIR?
Yes, yes, just in case.
And the potential re-upzoning. Okay, then the cost makes sense, because I remember the last EIR cost almost a million dollars by itself. So then, so the cost is higher because it includes potential rezoning and EIR. That's good to know, because the scope of work in the staff report put that as optional. And then another thing is the, the number of meetings. I see that scope of work says it includes six city council planning commission, housing commission meetings, and two community workshops. So are these, so in case we would like more community workshops, there will be additional cost?
Yes, so currently, the scope of work includes eleven total public meetings or study sessions. And that's with either city council, planning commission and/or housing commission. It also includes two community meetings and workshops, three stakeholder meetings, online engagement and a webpage. So it is rather robust, but they do include an option for additional meetings in their project budget breakdown.
Okay, so it's likely we could have maybe two more community meetings. Do we know how much would be the additional cost for that?
I'd be happy to look into that. Looks like it would be about, or if, if you are specifically asking for two additional community workshop meetings, that would be approximately sixty thousand. But I would like to remind you that we also included a twenty percent project contingency in our budget already.
I just want to get some idea. And then also, I see the scope of work mentioned that they actually use a comprehensive community engagement tool that the residents can get engaged offline. So could you introduce that tool a little bit? So maybe we don't need that many meetings if we have more other engagement methods.
Sure, so I believe that staff will actually be going through a training for this type of engagement service soon. So I don't have all the answers, but from my understanding, it is a unique way to engage a vast number of community members. There are different, different methods in this type of platform. There's forums, there's stories, question and answer, polls, surveys. There's also different interactive digital community workshops that we can do through this platform.
Oh, great. So this is all included, and we will find out more detail in the study session coming up.
I agree, so yes.
Final question is, I see the task C is housing and spatial housing needs. And the spatial housing needs that is listed here is, quote, spatial housing needs will be evaluated for the disabled elderly, large families, farm workers families with female heads of household families and persons in need of emergency shelter. But then I remember in the housing element, there is a specific requirement of affirmatively fair housing. There's some, a, a new term. And that specifically has to do with, I just the issue that's, according to the APEC criteria, Cupertino is not diverse enough because we have a very large percentage of Asian populations, but not some other racial groups. But that's not addressed in this task C, so I'm wondering how this consultant, which, or which part of the scope of work included something that would address affirmatively fair housing criteria?
Yeah, Vice Mayor, good, good question, thank you. We, we will be addressing the, our assessment of affirmative, furthering fair housing. It's required as part of Housing Element Update, and it will be, that will be going concurrently. But it's on a separate, separate, separate budget with a separate consultant list that we'll be working with.
Oh, so that will be done by another consultant, not by this one?
If I may jump in, Director Fu, that's okay?
Sure, go ahead.
Under task, yes, so there is an analysis that the city will be undertaking with regard to affirmatively furthering fair housing. However, for housing element purposes, there is another task under Task G related to affirmatively furthering fair housing. We have to analyze all of our sites and determine how the selection of sites actually further, affirmatively furthers fair housing. So that task is included under Task G.
So you mentioned another consultant, is there another budget item for that?
No, that is on a separate track, and I believe the housing manager can address that, but that is, that will be coming to council at some point, yes. Okay, thank you, that's all.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Next, we have Councilmember Wei.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So I wanna clarify three points. The first one is, I did hear Ben, Director Ben, explain that the difference in the pricing for other cities in our city, it really depends on the scope of work. So I know public, we're, you know, council members are very curious and public is gonna get asked. So I hear that, and I think that's, you know, we have six bids, so I'm pretty sure we picked the first one that, the one that's really catered to our needs. So I just wanna make sure that is what Director Ben means. The second one is, we, and I also hear the discrepancies for seven hundred seventy-four thousand dollars. Actually, it doesn't, it, it's not that much, because we, our staff thought of, when they did the estimate, they calculated the grant funds of LEAP, three hundred thousand dollars, and REAP, fifty-two, six, one, three, into it. But now we have to pay it first before it get reimbursed. So a discrepancy seems to be big, but it's not as big as it seems. Correct me if I'm wrong, I won't clarify that. So actually, the three hundred fifty-two thousand, six hundred thirty dollars will be back from the grant to fund this program, but it's backwards. So we have the budget now, we will get reimbursed later. The third one is about timing, and I, I really think this, we should make this our priority right now when we do our housing elements. So can you verify my, my analysis is correct?
Yeah, yes, of course, Councilmember Wei, thank you for that. Your analysis is, is correct. In terms of the, the, the funding originally, like I mentioned, originally, we, we had looked at this being about nine hundred thousand up to a million. So we, we proposed nine hundred thousand, but it's split into different efforts and different projects. And so depending on what, what rises to the, to the priority for the work program item, some will not be able to capture, and that's why you see that discrepancy. Like you mentioned also, of course, the grant funds, the three hundred fifty-two thousand and change play a huge part into that. So if you don't look at all that, really the difference is about one, whatever, one point oh one million versus the nine hundred thousand plus that we additionally initially anticipated, so roughly about a hundred thousand dollar difference than, than we had initially anticipated, not even having a proposal on hand or the details of what could be done. That, that is the, the true discrepancy, if you wanna call it that. But yes, your, your assessment is, is absolutely correct, and it's all hands on deck for us. Like I mentioned, even the outreach process, we deployed five out of our seven planners from a team hours spent talking to consultants and multiple callbacks. So it, it is absolutely all hands on deck. We have a really capable team that works a tremendous amount of hours to, not just for these items, but also to perform the daily operations. We have a lot of permits and phone calls and those kind of things that still need to be attended to. So we're trying to maintain our service, we'll, we'll take care of these projects as well.
Very great. So my question is, what was the range of bids financially? What, what are we looking at here out of the, the six bids that came in?
Yeah, I think maybe Erica can, can give a more, more details. From, from what I recall, the, the difference is really not, not that much. It was maybe like a hundred thousand dollar difference. But really what comes down to is, is the completeness of the proposal and how well they know our city and our county, how well they prepared for what we are targeting, targeting to do. And this particular bid targeted all that and had a really good understanding of what we need, provided some good examples as well, that our team felt like was better prepared to, to start and work immediately, as opposed to do more research, you know, in the next two, three months before you can, you can initiate.
So, so are you saying that even though our RFP would have indicated the budget for this, every one of the six bids came in right around the nine hundred thousand, million dollar mark?
I believe the bids all come in somewhere around six to eight hundred thousand, something like that, in that, in that range.
Okay, and then you're adding another twenty percent contingency, is that?
Right, that's, that's correct, yes, sir.
So we're talking about six to eight, I, i- is that, Erica, is that consistent with, with your understanding of the bids? Be in the six to eight hundred thousand dollar range?
Correct, so out of the six bids, only two of them are for, for full service. So EMC and the other firm, that was our other finalist. The other firm that we chose not to recommend, they actually came in a, a bit over, around eight fifty, so about a hundred thousand dollars more than EMC.
Okay, did the RFP indicate the budget, or was there some kind of estimated range?
No, it did not.
Okay, so, so basically, we simply had a set of requirements and asked a, a number of companies to go ahead and, and bid that out, and six submitted, and we ended up getting, you know, general ballpark range here. So, so this is a question with regard to, other than the fact that they could work with us a little bit more quickly, what are the other value adds that we see in this recommended selection for EMC? Was there something in particular or some factors in particular that differentiated them, and maybe specifically for Cupertino in, in terms of being able to, you know, service our needs? And I also go back to my initial question as well in terms of, if there are two other cities in the county, do you happen to know which cities they are and about how much those cities are paying for this consultant?
If I could weigh in, Ben, and maybe you or Erica will know the other city's question. Mr. Mayor, when it came to me and it was down to the two finalists that had come in best, for me, the three criteria that tipped it to EMC, and I was a bit of the tie vote, I guess you'd say, amongst the staff, but a, but a heavy vote, was the starting earlier, that they are representing, I believe it's Los Catos and Monteserino in Santa Clara County. I don't know the dollar amounts of those contracts though. And third, they had a deeper bench. They had more resources to draw upon, and given the issues we're facing in the, every city in the Bay Area is facing, I thought the deeper bench was, was a strength to have as we launch this project at this time.
Is anyone from the consultant available in this meeting?
No, we wanna make sure we have the contract, so they will be available at the next meeting when we, when we talk about the Housing Element Update.
Okay, well, if no one can answer the question, can we find out how much Los Catos and Monteserino, I mean particularly Los Catos, right? Because Monteserino is, is quite small in population and in geography. But that, that would be an interesting data point there.
I, I would actually be able to answer that for you, Mr. Mayor. For the city of Los Catos, their contract went for a little bit under three hundred thousand. But again, their, their arena is much lower than ours, and I believe that they were looking at a different level of SEQA and more limited outreach than what we were proposing.
Interesting. And so they have the option of both reducing their outreach and having a lower level of SEQA, correct?
Yes, as mentioned before, we did include the optional EIR sequel in our budget, just to account for that, just in case.
So it does sound like we're adhering more to the principles of a greater public involvement as well as just being particularly sensitive to safety and, and environmental needs. So, well, thank you for that information. It, it'll be good. It, it'll be good to get a sense of, you know, other aspects that they might be bringing to the table. But at this point, I'll, I'll go ahead. Councilmember Moore, you do have your hand raised again. Did you have a a brief follow-up question before we go to members of the public?
Well, I think it's, it's actually perhaps a question for you, Mayor Paul, or, or for the, the city manager as suggestions for members of the public who are interested in this particular topic. I, I, some of us are aware that a, a form of a newsletter was sent out with, with various attacks and charges kind of levied against this, this process. How would this, how would those questions and opinions be, be best handled? Because I, I really don't think that a retraction is going to, to be sent to the same recipients. But in the future, how would you like to see that handled?
You know, I don't know. You know, frankly, that's an inquiry for staff, in my opinion. You know, if, if there's any lobbying related activity, you know, driving this, I, I think the legitimate question is to you know, ask our, our staff or city attorney to look into the idea of how we can enforce our newly enacted lobbying ordinance. I, I don't know why someone would just gratuitously, you know, make, make statements that are not exactly accurate and seem to be designed to raise a sense of embitterment. But, you know, I, I think we're doing our jobs here when we, we ask questions about costs, when we ask questions with regard to how we can outreach better to the community. And of course, we're balancing that out with the aspirations of our society, right? Because we want to be able to encourage free speech, which of course is really more about dialogue than it is about smear, hopefully. So, you know, I, I think we have to take the good with the bad. That, that would be my encapsulated answer to that. Interim City Manager Larson or City Attorney Johnson, did you have anything that you wanted to add to that at this point?
You know, the only comment I would add is that staff during the course of this presentation have tried to lay out the facts as we know it. And I think that is staff's role in terms of the political discourse that occurs. That's kind of beyond staff, but in terms of providing facts such as the firm we're recommending is doing to other cities in Santa Clara County. I think that's relevant information for the council to know.
Okay, fair enough. City Attorney Johnson?
No, I, I concur with, with what, what Greg said. You know, the providing accurate information is, is often the, the best remedy for, for, for inaccurate information in the context of, of First Amendment speech.
Okay, let's go on to our members of the public. I see that we have Paul Soto and Jennifer Griffin with hands raised. Welcome, Paul. And we will, once Paul's comments are concluded, you'll have to have your hand raised in order to speak. I see Jean Bedord also has her hand raised at this point. And so we'll start with Paul. Welcome, Paul.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, what, what we're dealing with right now is 100, approximately 100 years of neglect, maybe 90 years of neglect and a failure, a moral failure to center the generational consequences of redlining. So I, I would, I would, I would challenge the, the council to, to, to try to at least try to adopt that type of perspective, that, that the moral and ethical implication and legal, and legal implications of redlining. That this is the brunt, this is the consequence and it's up to our generation to settle those moral and ethical and legal violations that have happened over four generations. One good, really, really good piece is that Martin Luther King, April 3rd of 1967, at Stanford University, County of Santa Clara, he gave a speech, it's called The Other America, and he articulates explicitly how this happened, what it looks like, what its moral failures were of segregated housing. Okay, and so when the redlining map, it's no coincidence, see, because I grew up right there on, on, in the Gardner area. So Bird Avenue, Bird Avenue, that's the cutoff point. Every single thing west of Bird Avenue in the County of Santa Clara, all affluent, money, power, it was concentrated. This is by design. And we're dealing with the generational impact now of that, but we haven't centered the language around it. So now I have, I'm, I'm going to be sending you, I have 40 documents that were written and they're, they're, they're public documents from the city of San Jose articulating the language that, 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 that rationalized and justified the redlining map of 1939. And so I'm going to send you that. I'm going to send you this, just a couple of things to get you familiar on how this happened. And when you look, you're going to be horrified, you're going to be just completely like this is insane. This is just flat out insane what was done. But it was done methodically and with precision in order to concentrate whites, because it was basically, it was basically an extension of the Eugenics movement of the late 1900s, early 20th century. Where they stated that we have to keep the white race pure. We can't have ourselves in proximity to races and cultures and, and they actually called them invaders, which is interesting. Because that language was resurfaced within the context of Trump's candidacy and, thank you, his candidacy and his presidency. And so, so I'm going to be sending you all those documents. You go ahead and look at them yourself. And then I think you'll kind of understand what I'm saying, that it has to be centered within the context of these conversations so that people can understand. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Paul. Our next speaker is Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor Darcy. I'm sorry, I keep calling you Darcy, Mayor Paul. Yes, I'm Jennifer Griffin and you know, I, I have followed everything about ABA and HCD and MTC and the RENA numbers. This has been an ongoing drama. Never seen anything like this in the last 21 years that we've been in this city and we were in the county five years before. This is mega drama. And I will tell you right now, my 20 years, 21 years of association with the city of Cupertino, we are a fine city. I have always been impressed by the diligence and brilliance of our staff. I, I commend the staff we have now working on this. We are in, we have, because of what the governor did, I don't, I am going to reiterate again. What he did on nine and 10 went over the line. We have gone into Soviet dictatorship land. I recommend that everyone become aware of what he has done. Frankly, the stuff coming out of Sacramento makes you wonder if the politicians hate the residents of the state. The RENA numbers are outrageous. I, my main reason for pulling this item was to make sure that EMC planning came into this neutral and that they understood the confusion and concerns that the very activated residents of our city, we are enraged, engaged and ready, and let's roll. Local control, let's grow. Four is four, local control, let's roll. This, this arena cycle is going to be one heck of a ride, but I'm concerned about, everybody seems to be trying to upzone everything in California. I'm particularly concerned about the upzoning more the properties in Cupertino, that we need to have special light on that. I think EMC is going to be fantastic. They are coming in, I have family members with property in Los Gatos. I want to make sure that they are protected from RENA numbers and from SB 9 and SB 10. I, I think that it, it works out good. We have Montevista, which has suffered SB 35 drama. And frankly, you know what? We've had a heck of a year. We had DC almost taken over by God knows what. Then we have new politicians. Gavin is running the state like he was in a far left, he was running with Putin. And thanks EMC and staff, but yes, we're engaged, we're enraged and we're ready to roll. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Our next and last speaker is Jean Bedord. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening, Mayor Paul and council members. My name is Jean Bedord and I am a longtime Cupertino resident. I am here tonight to urge you to authorize the city manager to execute the consulting agreement before you. Time is of the essence. This city and this council have been well aware of the requirement and deadlines for the sixth cycle general plan housing element update. But way too much time and too many resources were spent contesting the allocations instead of getting to work on the process itself. In addition, far too much time and resources were focused on a density bonus ordinance that has now been deemed non-compliant. Neighboring jurisdictions were smarter. Palo Alto and Mountain View secured their consultants in December 2020, nine months ago. By contrast, Cupertino was still recruiting between April and July of this year and only now has an actual consultant agreement. So what's the problem? My understanding from a public meeting is that there were two failed RFP cycles and over 100 consultants were contacted. Could the city's reputation be a major problem? The passage of AB 1174 specifically citing Falco and Cupertino is significant. The housing element for Cupertino will be highly scrutinized by HCD. So consultants are going to submit high bids. In contrast, other jurisdictions that closed their agreements in 2020 appear, and I always say appear, to have lower costs and more progress. Mountain View is paying roughly $266,000 for planning for over twice as many units as Cupertino. Palo Alto, known as another difficult city, is paying $627,000 for about 30% more units, less than Cupertino. The city's reputation and distraction with non-essential projects is costing us dearly. I urge you to sign this agreement so the city can get working on revising the housing element. There's a lot of work to be done in the next six months and the city needs to start community outreach. Time is of the essence. Thank you.
All right, we'll take it back to city council for any further comments. Before that happens, I'll entertain a motion. Would anyone like to move the default motion, which is the staff recommendation on item number 15? See Councilmember Wei with a hand raised?
So moved.
Would anyone like to second? Vice Mayor Chow?
Second.
All right. So we have the staff recommendation as well as a second for the motion. Councilmember Wei, did you want to speak to your motion?
I, okay, so my only comment is, yes, I think time is of essence and let's get this rolling. And then we have a lot of outreach to do, a lot of work to do, so let's start the work as soon as possible.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Hi, I just want to confirm that on the scope of work includes, there are a list of optional tasks, so it includes the first two, right? But not the rest. Could we confirm that? I think SEQA, I mean the quote, the, I think the task A to K totals about 500 something thousand. And then I think including L and M, that would add 6, 7,000, so, and then you, there are optional task NOP also. I just want to confirm we are including LMM, LMM tasks, but not the other three, right?
Correct.
Okay, good. And also that I quickly Googled Palo Alto cost. They just last year spent $1.5 million on long-range planning in addition to housing elements. So apparently, they have spent some other dollars on, so their housing element alone might not be as much, perhaps because they have been doing other things. I don't know. I think probably each city is different. So it's not apple-to-apple comparison. We need to look at the scope of work of each contract to really know. Thank you.
Yeah, and you, you know, what I, I will say is that I think our interim city manager has done a, a good job leading by example, especially in this case where there's some active engagement with the community to get solicitations, to, to get bid, bid responses. So, you know, I, I think that, that's a, that's a good example and let's move forward and, and learn. You know, I'm a bit disappointed to hear, I, I don't know if it's self-serving, I don't know what purpose it really is geared at, but inaccurate information saying that, you know, over 100 were, you know, approached and declined. I, I just, I, I, I don't know frankly, you know, where a lot of this comes from, but I, I think that we're best served by, you know, looking forward, putting good and accurate information out there and having a cohesive and honest conversation, which I believe this has been. You know, I, I would just say to the consultant, you know, welcome, assuming that this passes, I hope in good faith that it does serve Cupertino to a requisite level with the amount of commitment we're, we're setting forth as well. So Vice Mayor Chow, you still have your hand up. Did you want to say something or?
Sorry.
Is it okay if I call a vote? Okay, okay, at this point, Madam City Clerk, if you could please conduct a roll call vote.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so before we get to our last three items on the agenda, I will go ahead and call a five-minute recess and we'll reconvene at approximately, let's just call it 8:55. It's around 8:48, so 8:50 or so. We'll, we'll see in a few minutes.